Mayor Danner, the public is in.
Okay, thank you Leah. Let's get started. I call this meeting to order of the City Council for the City of Gross Point Park. Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Present.
Reed.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Rapsen.
Here.
Hajes.
Here.
Lewitt.
Here.
And Mayor Danner.
Here. Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic of America. Now, so the first item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. You have it before you. There are three items in the consent agenda. April 12th minutes, approving temporary parking traffic regulations, rather, and the finance report. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Sir's support?
Support.
We can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
Hajes.
Yes.
Lewitt.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes. Before we move on, I thought I'd comment on one of the items in the consent agenda that we just approved. That's traffic regulation 215. There's broad agreement on the intent of that regulation and apparently we're getting some feedback recently and that there's some confusion in the signage. So I've spoken to the city manager and I just wanted to let you all know and the public that the city manager will be working with public safety and our traffic engineer to see if there's some signage improvements that can be made related to that traffic regulation which impacts the Kirchville and Balfour corner.
Can I add something to that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I suppose so.
Just to comment, I think I'll email Nick as well, but I just want to counsel the law. I'm just going to reach out to the principals to see if they can send some literature to the parents of the schools, alerting them of this change and keeping them in track. I got five emails today about that corner of Balfour and St. Balfour Kirchville with pictures sent about cars parking wrong. So I'll be, I just wanted to let everyone know that I think that's a good, a good step is letting the, the schools disseminate that information to the parents as well because they're the ones that aren't.
Super.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to public comment agenda items. I'll turn it over to the administration and see if we have any written public comment and then verbal public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. So I do have one, I do have one written public comment. This comment comes from Mr. Greg Donnelly of 1220 Lake Point. Dear Council, I comment today on one particular agenda item, the introduction of our new Director of Public Safety. It would have been easy for the administration to follow precedent and public pressure to choose to promote from within for this important role in our city, but that's not what happened. Instead, a thorough and fair process led to a new voice in leading public safety in Gross Point Park. I find this encouraging and wish to commend the city's administration for this choice. Let's use this as an example of how to chart the path toward a better future together. In addition, it became clear at last week's budget workshop that we spend far more as a city on public safety than we do on anything else. It's easily more than half our budget every year. I encourage the administration and the new director of the department to think about public safety in a much broader context than simply policing. How do we ensure that all our residents and visitors truly feel safe? Mayor, those are the written public comments and I'll turn it over to Leah for spoken.
Okay. Leah?
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. I do have one person currently in the queue, so I'm going to go ahead and share the three-minute And Cameron, you are first. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and please state your full name and city of residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Cameron Anis. I live in Gross Point Park. One of those letters you received about the intersection was from my family. I'm a little disappointed in how that was actually handled. I don't think that should have been a consent agenda item. I don't believe that you received, there was no information put into the, informations disseminated about whether or not it was actually effective. The police chief interim, police chief had not actually, as far as my knowledge, shown any reason that it was useful or effective, any way of having a metric of if it improved safety. It was not informed, no one nearby was informed of the change prior to being in place. That's a month and a half or three months. So this, having the schools now say something is closing the barn door after the horse already out. It's also been rather arbitrary. It was only in one direction. I'm completely okay with and would be happy with having a sign saying no left turns from the northbound direction, which is, but you can't even go straight. Seems kind of pointless if you're, if the goal, which I believe the stated intent was to reduce traffic in front of these schools. The intent was good, but the actual implementation, I believe, was flawed. And I don't think it was something that should have been part of a consent agenda and I think should have been subject to more rigorous scrutiny on whether it was actually useful and served a purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Danner, I have no other public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you Leah. That, that closes the public comment on agenda items session. We'll now move on to the Arbor Day poster contest winners. This has always been one of my very favorite topics on our agenda since I first joined council. The Beautification Commission has, has had this for a long time and it's a wonderful thing for, for our community, recognizing support for Arbor Day. I'm going to ask Pat Deck, who's been a member of our Beautifications Committee for Beautification Commission for many years and has led this poster contest effort for, for many years to introduce the topic and then we'll move on to resolutions for this year's winners. Pat?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Danner, and greetings to all the council members, to the mayor and all the other city officials. I am pleased to be able to report to you on the work of the commission with regards to the Arbor Week poster contest. I want you to know that this year marks the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day. That's a long time. And it's the 38th anniversary locally of our Arbor Week poster contest sponsored by the commission. Last year, the, and even this year, the pandemic has posed a number of obstacles to conducting the contest, but the commission has found a way of keeping the tradition going. And because last year we were unable to recognize the 2020 winners, we're going to combine that with my report this year. Last year, while we were in the middle of, of contest preparations, schools actually closed and we had to, you know, figure out what to do at the spur of the moment and we chose to assess the situation and adapt to the restrictions. And so we asked students who would like to participate to have their posters done and have them judged by their homeroom teachers and then post them in the front window or the front door of their home. And, you know, in the early stages of the pandemic, we didn't know where the virus lived, that people were afraid to even handle these posters. So anyway, it all worked out and we didn't have as high a rate of participation then as we normally would have, but we had wonderful support from the teachers and from the Gross Point Public Schools on this. And additionally, with the poster contest, we also distribute seedlings to all the fourth graders. The poster contest is open just to fourth graders and then we distribute these seedlings as well. Well, last year we got, you know, all these things were ordered, you know, at the very beginning of the pandemic and the seedlings came and they were put in quarantine. So by the time we got the seedlings out of quarantine, which lasted a couple of weeks, they, they just weren't even good enough to give out anymore. So we had a lot of complications, but we, we did get through it. And so I will first tell you a little bit about the winners from 2020 and I believe Leah, you have some pictures or slides you're going to show us. And this first slide is of a young man named, we had six winners, by the way, last year. This first picture is of a young man named Mateo Cannavari and he was a student from Mrs. Moyers class. And there he is, standing in front of his front door with his poster and he, he said the slogan was find a tree, find a home, most appropriate because trees are homes to many varieties of insects and animals. So that was very lovely. Congratulations to Mateo. And then the next picture. Okay, this young man is Savas Zingus. He was a student in Mrs. Howie's class at Trombley School and his very colorful poster had a house in the crown of the tree. And again, referring to the fact that, you know, trees are the source of lumber for which we build homes. And the next picture. Okay, this lovely girl is Mackenzie Andrews, a student from Mr. Gross's class at Mayor School. And she just had this absolutely stunning, beautiful, pink blossoming tree. And I don't think I have to let any of you know that this time of year, the trees in the park are at their utmost beauty. And there are a lot of beautiful pink blossoming trees. So that was Mackenzie. And then the next picture. This is Helena Trudell, a student of Mrs. Nader at St. Clair School. And she shows this very heartwarming girl hugging the tree and she said, the trees are there for you, so you be there for our trees. There were two other students, unfortunately, we were unable to get pictures of them, but one was Cole Parlan Gally and the other one was Pablo San Miguel. They were both from DeFer School. And you're seeing on the pictures now, a couple of the posters that were on the front. All right. Now, for 2021, our posters, our contest sort of resumed its tradition of the posters being judged by the Gross Point Park Beautification Commission. And just want you to know, judging is blind. We never know the name of the students because there is no name put on the poster. And we did judge in a socially distanced fashion over at the Tompkins Activity Center. We laid about 90 posters, all on the floor of the Activity Center. And then the commissioners went in there like three at a time and picked out their favorites and then from there we narrowed it down in rounds to the winners. And Mayor Danner, I believe you have a resolution for these winners.
I do. So council, we have those three winners this year. Anthony Manino is, is the winner. Emerson Lawrence is a runner up and Sonia Whitaker is also a runner up. And I'm going to ask council to approve the resolutions that are before you, then I will read each approved resolution for each of the winners. So do I have a motion to approve these, the resolutions recognizing these three winners?
So moved.
There's a tie there. One of you can support.
I'll support.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
Hajes.
Yes.
Lewitt.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. I'm going to read each of the resolutions because it's, it's an important day for each of these winners and their families and it's important, I think, to recognize them formally by, from the city. City of Gross Point Park Resolution in Recognition of Anthony Manino. Whereas Mayor Danner, City Council, and members of the Beautification Commission have established the week of April 25th to May 1st, 2021 as Arbor Week. And whereas the Beautification Commission in recognition, in recognition of Arbor Week has established as Arbor Week poster, a Arbor Week poster contest for area of fourth grade students. And whereas the purpose of the awards is to promote community awareness and involvement in Arbor Week by the students, as well as an appreciation of the many benefits of trees. Now therefore, be it so resolved that Mayor Danner, City Council, and members of the Beautification Commission hereby recognize and honor Anthony Manino as the winner in the City of Gross Point Park Arbor Week poster contest. My personal congratulations to, to you Anthony and, and your family and yours, and your teacher. And I think it's a wonderful accomplishment. Let's move on and read the next one. It's a nice poster. Pat, did you want to say anything about the poster before we move on?
No, just, I don't know that you can actually appreciate that. He took brown chenille stems and created the trunk of the tree and the branches with it, very nicely done. And then the leaves on the tree are made of a type of foam and they're different shaped leaves because trees have different shaped leaves. And then he wrote on there, some of the benefits that trees have, the oxygen, fuel, paper and food and so on. Very nice.
Terrific. Move on to the next one. This is for Emerson Lawrence. Resolution in Recognition of Emerson Lawrence. Whereas Mayor Danner, City Council, and members of the Beautification Commission have established the week of April 25th to May 1st, 2021 as Arbor Week. And whereas the Beautification Commission in recognition of Arbor Week has established an Arbor Week poster contest for area of fourth grade students. And whereas the purpose of the awards is to promote community awareness and involvement in Arbor Week by the students, as well as an appreciation of the many benefits of trees. Now therefore, be it so resolved that Mayor Danner, City Council, and members of the Beautification Commission hereby recognize and honor Emerson Lawrence, a runner up in the City of Gross Point Park Arbor Week poster contest. Congratulations Emerson. Pat, do we have, I think we can see the poster here if you want to comment on it?
Emerson has that poster with the gorgeous big red heart. And then she has a number of pictures within the red heart, some of which tell of the benefits of trees and some tree activities and so on. She just did a fabulous tree and then she writes there, plant a tree today, it all starts with you. Just a great job.
Wonderful. And then finally, for Sonia Whitaker. Resolution in Recognition of Sonia Whitaker. Whereas Mayor Danner, City Council, and members of the Beautification Commission have established the week of April 25th to May 1st, 2021 as Arbor Week. And whereas the Beautification Commission in recognition of Arbor Week has established an Arbor Week poster contest for area of fourth grade students. And whereas the purpose of the awards is to promote community awareness and involvement in Arbor Week by the students, as well as an appreciate, an appreciation of the many benefits of trees. Now therefore, be it so resolved that Mayor Danner, City Council, and members of the Beautification Commission hereby recognize and honor Sonia Whitaker, a runner up in the City of Gross Point Park Arbor Week poster contest. Congratulations. And Pat, I think we can see the poster here if you wanted to comment.
Yes. Sonia is in the center grouping of the three students. She's got this beautiful poster that features a tree trunk made out of an actual piece of tree trunk that was glued on there. And then the, the actual crown of the tree and the leaves, she shaped ivy vine and glued that on the poster for the crown of the tree. And then she writes there, help the trees, trees help you. Again, a very nice job.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. And congratulations to all three winners this year and to the, to the winners from last year as well. So that's a, it's a terrific thing. Arbor Week is, is, is a big thing for Gross Point Park because as we recognized in an earlier council meeting, we have been a tree city for many, many, many years. And we also were awarded the Growth Award this last year for our stewardship of our city forest. And for that, I would like to thank our city forester who's on the call tonight, Brian Coulter. Brian, I can't see below your neck there and whether or not you have your wooden tie on today, but often you do and, and I'd love to see it if you did, did have it on today.
Sure do, Mayor. Wearing it this time every year.
I was going to ask the same thing.
It's a, it's a special tie and it's a great recognition of how important trees are to our city. Thank you all for participating and we'll move on to the next agenda item.
May I just say one more thing, Mayor?
Absolutely.
I don't know that all of you realize what a close connection the state of Michigan has to the, the actual Arbor Day holiday. It was founded by a Michigander, Jay Sterling Morton, who grew up in Monroe, Michigan. And then he was educated at Albion College in the class of 1850 and then later at the University of Michigan in the class of 1854. And when he championed this idea of Arbor Day, he certainly reflected back on the beautiful trees that were growing here in Michigan. But by then, he was a newspaper editor in the state of Nebraska and the trees there had just practically been decimated to create farmland and also to build homes and whatnot. So he proposed a, a tree planting holiday. And one of the, that first tree planting holiday was April 10th, 1872. And he noted at that time that other holidays repose upon the past. Arbor Day proposes for the future. So that is all I have to share with you and thank you so much again.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. You're welcome.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next agenda item. We've lost Councilmember McConnell on the screen. Is she still with us in the meeting?
I'm still here.
Okay.
My camera's still on. Can you see me?
No, but we can hear you, which is good. The next agenda, oh, there you are. The next agenda item is a resolution honoring the Ticklish Turkeys. This, this agenda item was brought to us by Councilmember Reed. We have a very active destination imagination program within the Gross Points and, and we have had success with our teams in previous years. And Councilmember Reed identified that we've had some, some success this year as well. And I'd like to turn the, this topic over to Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. And I'm just wondering if any of our Ticklish Turkeys are on and if so, if you would be okay with them turning their cameras on?
Sure. If we have any Ticklish Turkeys to recognize, that'd be great.
I think they're planning to be here.
There's one.
There's a couple. Great. I, I think I'd like to do the same thing to start with a motion for, for council to approve the resolution honoring the Ticklish Turkeys. And then I'll read the resolution and then we can ask some questions of the Ticklish Turkeys team, if, if that's okay?
Sure, that's fine. So I'll, I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution before you.
Move.
Support?
Support.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Rapsen.
Yes.
Hajes.
Yes.
Lewitt.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. Turn it back over to Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. And a resolution honoring the Ticklish Turkeys. Whereas the Ticklish Turkeys are a Gross Point Destination Imagination Team comprised of Benjamin Bryan, Alyssa Flores, Matthew Jacobowski, Daily Jogan, Malvina Lubansky, Liam Rather, and CJ Schindelbeck and coached by parents Matt Jacobowski and Scott Schindelbeck. Whereas in 2020, this team of Pierce Middle School eighth graders participated in the technical challenge of the Destination Imagination STEM Program. Whereas the technical challenge called the Big Fix tasked the team with solving a problem with an invention. Whereas the Ticklish Turkeys decided to tackle the Flint water crisis. Whereas the team conducted a search of patents related to chemistry, reducing the amount of lead that dissolved into drinking water from lead pipes. Whereas their research found that the current chemistry worked to reduce lead dissolution, but had an unintended negative side effect of introducing high levels of phosphates into the water, which increases algae, algae formation. Whereas the Ticklish Turkeys experimented with alternative chemistry to find a solution that had the same or better anti-dilution characteristics while reducing the phosphate footprint. Whereas, after around of over 50 experiments, the team found chemistry that achieved their objectives. Whereas the Ticklish Turkeys was awarded a US patent because the chemistry they discovered was so inventive. Whereas US Patent Number 10919789 was granted to the Ticklish Turkeys LLC on February 16, 2021, with the title Multi-Functional Lead Anti-Dissolution Compositions. Whereas the Ticklish Turkeys LLC are a limited liability corporation duly organized and registered with the state of Michigan. Whereas the inventors, now all freshmen at Gross Point South High School, plan to pursue commercialization of their patented chemistry. And whereas the delivery of a safe water supply to its residents is among the most important functions of municipal government. Now that, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of the city of council of the city of Gross Point Park join in recognizing the Ticklish Turkeys for their innovation, dedication, and perseverance on this outstanding achievement.
Terrific. Congratulations. I have to, I have to say I'm very impressed by, by what this team accomplished and I see, I can see the three of you here and I'd like to congratulate you as well as your teammates. I'm particularly interested in this kind of competition. I'm an engineer by training, have always felt that, that more focus on STEM subjects is, is a great thing for our society and for our future. I was at one time a trustee on the, at the Detroit Science Center and I'm strongly in favor of how important science and having young people interested in developing their skills in this area is to our, our country and our world. So I really appreciate what, what you guys have accomplished and personally congratulate you. I don't know if any other members of council have anything they wanted to ask or say. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor, I'd echo your comments and this is really impressive and inspiring achievement by such outstanding young students. But I'll ask the question everybody else probably wants to ask. The Ticklish Turkeys, how'd you come up with that name, kids?
Well, um, when we came up with that name.
Maybe you can't share that, I don't know.
It wasn't very creative. It was like around Thanksgiving time. So we, we like, I think there was a picture of a turkey in the room and we were trying to come up with the room, and come up with the name. And we wanted to pick something with the same letter to describe the, the turkey. So we did Ticklish Turkeys. It wasn't very creative.
Great call. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember McConnell.
First, congratulations to all of you. This is a pretty amazing accomplishment. So I guess I have a two-part question. One is what made you choose this issue and the second part is, do you have any customers
Um, well, I, our team, we just, we really wanted to make a difference and at the beginning of like, like the brainstorming at the very beginning of like the entire competition, we're like, what can we do that we really want to fix that has been like a problem for a while? And we all came together and we're like, oh, this is a really good idea and something that's been like around and we really wanted to fix it.
Um, and I can answer the second part of the question. We. Um, and I can answer the second part of the question. We, we haven't really started to try to get customers yet, but some of us plan on, on approaching like another company that has a similar patent. Um, and seeing if we could, we could do something with them.
Terrific. Anybody else? Councilmember Reed?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna join in congratulating all of you. It's an amazing accomplishment. There are some engineers and other scientists out there who in a lifetime career have not achieved one US patent. So kudos to you all for starting early on that and I, I suspect there may be many more. And then my question is, is the team still together? And if so, what's next?
Um, right now, uh, no, our team is not together. We uh, just participated in the twenty twenty-one year DI. Uh, unfortunately that some members were not available to participate this year. So uh, we had a shorter, a smaller team. Um, uh, yeah, but a few of our members weren't able to join us this year. So. And then, um, we're not, uh, we're not entirely sure if we will be participating again next year. Uh, just because of like, uh, a lot of us are like getting older and like getting jobs now. So and our schedules are starting to fill up. So.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Relin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, guys. I have some good news. I work with the Global Health Initiative at Henry Ford Health System and I showed them this resolution. They've been doing some work with the Flint Water Crisis. And when you guys patent something, in my, my position, we call it intellectual property, which means you own it. We're also in the process of searching for a clinical champion in infectious disease. That's gonna be reaching out to Mr. Jacobowski and Mr. Schindelbeck to see how we can possibly support you guys on the commercialization of this intellectual property. Uh, to keep it going, because it's, it's pretty phenomenal. Like, like Councilmember Reed said, not everyone has a patent. So it's really something to be proud of and something to look forward to. I'll be reaching out to your parents to see how we can help you keep going. So thanks for all that. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, one more, Councilmember Hodges. Oh, two more.
Yes, I think my colleague member fluid wants to speak too, but member Relin, that's awesome to hear and member Reed, thank you for bringing this to our attention. It is really cool and Alyssa Flores and Matthew Jacobowski and Malvina Lubanski, I've got to say those names, we have to remember them and I hope you will promise us that you'll keep shining and never wasting a step. And I'd also like to point out to Mr. Seisland that perhaps we could be their first customer, since they're so good at the big fix. There's a few big issues that we could assign them, like the Marina and some underfunded liabilities. If you folks could figure that out for us, then your star will certainly continue to rise. So hopefully you can give me a thumbs up on that. And good luck to you all and congrats to your parents too on just raising great humans.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fluid?
Thanks. Um, I, I can't match, you know, I can't say anything nearly as exciting as like Councilmember Relin just offered you guys and I hope that, I hope that goes forward. I just wanted to reiterate, I was really impressed. I didn't know about this. When I read the resolution, I saw turkeys and I thought maybe it was something to do with the free roaming turkeys that we have around, around the neighborhood. Um, and I was blown away when I read what you guys have accomplished. So I just wanted to say again, congratulations and please continue to achieve the way that, that you have been.
Okay, thank you. Well, once again, congratulations to, to you and your team. It's a wonderful accomplishment and it's, it's a great credit to, to you and, and your family. So thank you again and thanks for joining us. We're gonna move on to the next agenda item now. Which is the manager's report. So I'm gonna ask the city manager, Mr. Seisland, to, uh, give his report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Denner. So before you tonight, I will go ahead and provide a little update regarding a couple items. Uh, consolidation of precincts three and five, just for everyone's information, there is gonna be an August primary due to the number of residents running for city council seats. Uh, election law allows, allows up to three thousand registered voters per precinct. And so we'll be consolidating three and five. The total would be about two thousand twenty-four. Um, and so over, you know, the last couple of years, city received several concerns from residents who vote at precinct three because of the inclement weather and having to stand in line outside. So we're hoping to, uh, make that a little bit easier. In regards to as well, um, about absentee ballots, uh, where the city's currently working on processing the permanent absentee voter applications. And we plan to mail them out on May nineteenth. Absentee ballots must be available for issuance by June nineteenth. Our target date for the mailing of the bulk of the ballots is due um, June twenty-first. And dates could change depending on when we actually receive those ballots. So I want to update regarding that. Uh, the Tifa Board has, uh, met and did its budget workshop and I'll talk about that a little bit later in the committee reports. Um, as of right now, we've had a priority for funding and we've received six applications to date for the Tifa COVID Support Program, which is about six thousand dollars to eligible businesses for a maximum of seventy-five thousand dollars total within the Tifa. As well, the DDA had their budget workshop and I can talk about that later, but we have a total grant of about twenty thousand dollars. And we've received three applications to date. Uh, regarding, uh, the Public Works Building, just as an update for the general public. Due to some material shortage, especially the steel in the industry right now, um, the timeline for the construction of Public Works is being adjusted to a later start date than expected. Um, it's hard to predict precisely at this time, but we're hopeful for a, uh, could be a late summer, early fall start to go in upright. Um, underground, underground work can be done beforehand. Um, and so at a future council meeting, we'll bring for review consideration to vacate portions, alley and wayburned lease of DPW. My understanding from working with a steel co, with the steel industry is that Amazon is buying a bunch of that right now uh, for building all sorts of facilities. And so, you know, obviously with COVID too, that's why we're seeing those delays. But, um, you know, I do appreciate Amazon. My packages always come early. So they're, they're doing their best. City Hall building, you'll see probably now in the next four to five weeks, uh, some construction to start. Um, we'll have staging areas in between the pump station, city hall and in the back parking lot um, of city hall. So that'd be in, in between the alley and Maryland. Uh, what you'll see first is the roof and the windows that'll start to be worked on. And then right now we're considering HVAC, ceiling and lighting upgrades, um, going through that right now. Uh, good news as well, Wayne County has opened a permanent satellite location for COVID nineteen shots at the Wayne County Community College in Harper, at Harper Woods Campus. Uh, that's at nineteen three oh five Vernier Road. Hours are eight AM to three PM, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, noon to seven. Residents can call eight six 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 one zero three eight eight five to schedule an appointment. Walk-ins are also accepted at all vaccine clinics run by the Wayne County Health Department and will be sharing this to the city website and other communications. Uh, the master plan update, uh, due to COVID, uh, the April twenty-seventh, uh, outdoor meeting that was to be held at the Tompkins Center has been moved now to May twenty-fifth with the city and MKSK holding the community open house. So dependent upon whether, we're hoping for it to be outdoors, but it could certainly be moved to indoors. Right now we're looking at two timeframes. One will be from eleven thirty AM to one thirty and later in the day from five thirty to seven thirty. Uh, in regards to the dog park, if you have visited Patterson Park as of late, um, work has started on the front entrance and concrete pad entering the dog park site. Work will continue throughout the next couple of weeks with an anticipated June opening. Mayor Denner, those are my, that is my report and happy to answer any questions or comments.
Hey, thank you. Are there any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Fluid?
Thanks. Um, the only question I had was regarding the consolidation of precinct three. How are the current precinct three voters being notified about that?
I'll, I'll ask Clerk Blayhut to comment on that. Clerk Blayhut, are you available?
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, Nick?
Uh, Councilmember Fluid's questions were, um, how are residents being notified for precinct three to change?
You know, we notified everybody by sending them all a card in the mail with a letter. It's been posted on the city website, um, our Facebook page and, um, they were notified that way.
Okay, so it's all of the, all of the people in precinct three were mailed cards?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, everyone in precinct, oh, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, city manager, if you would, uh, could you give us an update on the DTE Lawn Restoration Program, uh, in West Park? There have been a lot of citizens that have expressed some anxieties and concerns.
Uh, yes, thank you, Councilmember Robson. So myself and the Public Works Team, we have talked with DT numerous times to discuss the restoration concerns regarding uh, seed, um, the sod as well as, um, uh, there's been some trees that have been damaged and also some dirt and such that has gone into the street. And so we continuously talk with DT in regards to fixing this, um, operations. Uh, one of the things that we discussed, um, I actually discussed with them today is that we need an update to our restoration FAQ that'll go out to the public. Um, you know, there are some areas that we've noticed within, um, the West Park area that uh, the seed, you know, seems to, you know, there's patches and whatnot right now that we need to add more seed. DT has advised us that they will be coming in multiple times to provide that, especially in those areas that, um, you know, are not seeing as well of growth. And so I hope to have an updated FAQ that I can post on the city website and adjust it to the public. And I'll be asking DT as well if they can communicate and provide, uh, some, uh, leaflets to those residents that have concern. I have, I'll provide a phone number again. Uh, DT has asked us, um, for any restoration concerns to please call the following phone number at three one three two seven zero nine two four zero. And so at this point right now, uh, DT is still expected to be in town probably within the next, uh, four weeks. And afterwards, they'll be coming back numerous times to, uh, um, fix the grass, um, over in the West Park area. As well, if there's any concerns regarding, uh, bollards, to please call that number as well. Um, there were large bollards that were originally placed over by residents at their gas meter. Um, we have discussed this with DT and they're amenable, um, to having a much smaller diameter size. Um, and so if you could please call that number as well. And if you don't have any satisfaction, you know, please let us know and we'll reach out to a DT representative. And they'll also be, um, looking to water that seed with their watering trucks.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just follow up real quick. Thank you, city manager. Obviously, this is the time of year when you're, you're going to grow grass. This is the time we're here to do it. Uh, I'm glad you mentioned the watering. That was a major question. The other thing is the, the amount of seeds that, that they, they set out. I'm not a gardener, but it would seem to me that they need to put some type of topsoil over the seeds. If you could determine that, uh, I think that's critical. What we don't want to see is, obviously in July or August, a bunch of patches through, uh, West Park. So we're trying to avoid that. Thank you.
And we have communicated that to DT that, you know, besides resident, uh, concern, you know, we'd ask for them to come back and please review the area. They will be in Detroit, uh, right across from us. Um, they're actually working there right now, but they'll be closer to our city border. So um, you know, it's something that we're gonna keep on and as far as I understand, uh, they've been very responsive when called upon by residents.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember McConnell?
Thank you. Uh, just to follow up to that, um, I'm glad to hear about the bollards again, uh, that still remains a concern for some. The other thing that, um, people are concerned about, well, I also wanted to make sure when you share the information on the website, some people had their sprinkler systems disrupted. So if you could please include information about that, the information that I received is that they will replace the, uh, re, replace that sprinkler system or you can have it replaced yourself and get reimbursed. So if we could share that. And then the last thing is, I guess they've started doing tree trimming. And I'm, I'm hearing from residents who are concerned about a lack of notification. That people are just showing up in their backyards. But there's no two-way dialogue, uh, with that. So if you could raise that issue and let folks know what to do and, and who the point person is on that, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll, I will definitely do that. Thank you, Councilmember McConnell. Um, yes, the sprinkler system, you're correct as well. They will fix if they, um, you know, break that. And I'll talk with the city forester as well, who's been coordinating with DT regarding tree trimming.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Fluid?
Um, I just wanted a little bit further clarification on that, please, because in the past, we've asked, um, people who have ongoing issues to email you or to email Nina Thomas, who is the DPW supervisor. My, my intuition would tell me that people would, um, that residents would get a better response by working through the city and having the city kind of make a conglomeration of all of these issues and having, you know, the might of the city approaching DT and demanding that DT get their yards back to normal. So are we, are we doing that as well as asking them to contact DT on their own?
So what we're, what we ask is that, um, you know, residents contact DT outright and then if, if there's no satisfaction, you know, we certainly will use, um, DT to go, we'll talk with them right away. Oftentimes I will get emails or Patrick Thomas or Tom Jenny of DPW. And we, and as long as, you know, it's broken out and explained what the concern is and pictures, we forward that right on to their restoration manager, who's usually really quick in their response. And so um, either way, uh, communication is going to DT immediately.
Is, is the city keeping like a master file of these complaints?
Uh, we do. DPW does have a list over at, I, I don't have one, but DPW does have a list. And so they're going through with the checklist. Following up, we have weekly calls every Wednesday to ask them, hey, have you followed up at twelve hundred, um, Lake Point? Have you followed up at here? How about the bollard here? And so that's usually how our calls go. So we'll have, you know, depending upon the week, so over many calls, we'll ask what the response has been and, you know, have you resolved that? Or contacted the home? Have you knocked on the door? Um, you know, that's something we're continuously discussing with DT.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lots of interest in the DT topic. Thank you, uh, Mr. Seisland for your report. And let's move on to committee and commission reports. Uh, we have several this evening. Um, I'd like to start with, um, Recreation Commission would hit, which had a regular Recreation Commission meeting as well as Marina Subcommittee Meeting. I'll ask Councilmember Reed to report.
Thank you, Mayor Denner, and bear with me. There's a lot of information to share as we're moving into the summer season. Uh, the Marina Subcommittee met on April thirteenth. The Marina Supervisor is working with an engineering firm um, who's preparing an analysis report of the Marina. We expect to have that for the next committee meeting on June second. Um, the committee also discussed receiving regular Marina Fund status reports to monitor and track fund reserves as part of the planning process for Marina needs. Um, the good news for now is that water levels are predicted to be seven to eight inches below last year. So the risers that we put in, um, last year, um, will be sufficient. Uh, navigational red and green lights have been installed at the entrance to the Marina. Um, the committee, the subcommittee, as well as the Recreation Commission discussed, um, they've had some ongoing discussions about, um, personal watercraft. At this time, the Marina cannot accommodate personal watercraft because we do not have a lift. But that's something that, um, the commission is, um, is looking into. Chad Craig, the Parks and Recs Director, will also be reviewing with DPW the possibility of removing the construction fencing that was installed last year because of the high water levels to sort of mark off the, um, the areas of the park that flooded. Finally, there are still well openings on Pier One. Um, so, um, and I believe those are, um, smaller well sizes and, and those who are on the waiting list have declined them. So, um, residents who are interested should contact the Marina Supervisor to, uh, to discuss that. The next meeting of the subcommittee will be on June second at seven PM. And then the Recreation Commission met on May fifth. And we're gearing up for the summer season. Um, as the city manager mentioned, construction has begun on the dog park at Patterson Park with an expected opening in June. Um, the commission approved the dog park applicant. Um, the commission approved the dog park application rules and incident report, and this process is now in the hands of the city attorney for finalization. Uh, the pool at Windmill Point will be opening on schedule this year. Last year, we had a late opening due to COVID. Uh, we will have a similar reservation process to last year. Um, pool hours may be limited while school is in session due to the number of lifeguards and the hours that they may work while they're still in school. We will have swim team and swim lessons this season. We did not last season. Uh, the lifeguard situation will also likely impact early morning lap swim. Um, so that will probably be on a reduced schedule. Residents should, um, sign up for city emails or monitor the city website for the latest on that. Um, in addition to swimming, summer programming includes tennis. We will not have knapsackers this year, um, primarily due to COVID and those concerns. However, the Girls' Point Theater has partnered with the city and will be offering summer acting classes for grades one through nine. Uh, registration is open. You should visit the city website for details. Those, um, sessions are broken down according to age group and, um, I, I believe all of the offerings are in July, but the details for that program are on the website. It will primarily be an outside, um, uh, acting workshop with some limited group activities available or, um, that will take place in the gym or whether, if they need to go inside for the weather. Um, and they will be, um, adhering to all of the health and safety protocols, um, including, um, the health assessments for the students when they arrive. Uh, the long-term concessionaire, uh, Mary Lou Muir, has decided to retire and I'm sure we'll all miss her. Um, Mike Swanson of Fairfax Market will be taking over concessions at Windmill Point. At the Lavon Center, karate and rocksteady boxing will have summer programs. Uh, Director Craig is also reviewing increasing fitness center capacity under COVID guidelines, as well as the possibility of holding some fitness classes outdoors. Again, um, please, easiest thing to do is to sign up for, uh, city emails to be notified about, um, all of these updates. Finally, at Patterson Park, in addition to the dog park, the commission had a general discussion on the possibility of a disc golf course. And Director Craig continues to study this. Uh, also pending budget approval tonight, the city is looking to install an additional twelve kayak racks, which will reduce the waitlist by forty-eight. The current waitlist is about a hundred and twenty-five for kayaks. Uh, finally, um, uh, Director Craig is monitoring COVID restrictions for pop, the possible return of after six on Kirchvall and Charlevoix Street parties this summer. I mean, that will just depend on, um, what's allowed under, um, current, um, health and safety guidelines. And the next meeting of the Recreation Commission will be September first at seven PM. And that's it.
Thank you. Um, let's move on to, uh, the Beautification Commission and, uh, Councilmember Rowan, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, our day poster contest judging was last month, uh, as Pat stated, um, earlier. Um, it was amazing. We had, uh, over ninety posters, uh, broad spectrum media used, a lot of creativity. Uh, everyone should be proud. Those, all those posters are now posted throughout the city. Uh, you'll see them in various, um, places along Kirchvall, Charlevoix, City Hall, Lavon Center, places like that. The Spring Plan Exchange was last Saturday and it was extremely successful. We had it outside. Um, I will push you all to attend next year. Uh, it was fantastic. A lot of people were sad they missed it. Uh, we even had a visit from the sun, which gave a little, uh, uh, addition to our great ambiance with some music playing. Um, it'd be great to have some coffee and beer next year as well. So we'll see how that can go. Our commission will start judging for the twenty twenty-one beautification award starting in mid-June. Um, people will be, our commissioners will be going out and starting that. You'll, uh, you'll hear more about that on our city website as well. Our next meeting is this Wednesday, uh, via Zoom. Uh, please feel free to email me with any questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to the Planning Commission, uh, Councilmember Hodges?
Yes, Mayor Denner, thank you. Uh, the Planning Commission met on April twenty-first. We had two primary agenda items under consideration. The first being, um, an update on the master planning process. In addition to what you've already heard from City Manager Seisland, we did hear a summary from MKSK of the one thousand-plus surveys that were received, um, outcomes from the community visioning, um, session, as well as, uh, the input that was, uh, that occurred on the interactive map. So she was able to deliver that summary and also share with us that other next steps, uh, including, in, in addition to the session in May, would be a public workshop in August, at which time the community would have an opportunity to respond to a first draft. Um, and then between now and then, a vision, goals and strategies will be drafted. Um, the second primary item on the agenda was site plan review of the Wayburn Four unit development. A number of the aspects of the development were addressed by commission members, uh, as well as members of the public, in particular, those, um, immediate neighbors adjacent to the site, and certainly from members of our administration. Ultimately, a decision was delayed until a future meeting so that additional due diligence can occur, uh, on those items, uh, of discussion. And then lastly, the city manager provided an update on the DPW building, uh, which is experiencing COVID-related delays, um, as you've already heard. And it should be noted too, that a petition was submitted by some members of the community relative to the potential for the demolition of a home to make way for, um, parking in the Tifa district. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, move on to, uh, the DDA. As mayor, I am a member of the DDA, so I'll give a brief report. Uh, actually, much of this has been, been covered or will be covered. The, uh, the DDA met on April twenty-sixth. There are really two major, uh, items of business. One was, uh, an update on the COVID business program, which the city manager just updated us on. And the other was approval of the, of their proposed budget for fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, which, uh, will be a part of, uh, of our, uh, budget approval process later in this meeting. And the next meeting of the DDA is scheduled for June ninth, and this will be an informational meeting, which will be a recap of, uh, DDA activities during the last fiscal year, uh, to, uh, ensure compliance with state statute for that informational meeting. Um, and that's my DDA report. Um, now we'll go on to, uh, Tifa. Uh, City Manager Seisland, did you have, uh, additional updates on the Tifa meeting?
I do. Thank you, Mayor Denner. So I'm going to mirror similar to what you discussed. Um, the Ti, Tax Increment Finance Authority will be meeting for its next informational meeting on June eighth. Uh, they did meet on eight, on April twenty-seventh, uh, to discuss the proposed budget, uh, that goes before city council. Part of that budget, a total appropriation is approximately one point four million, with about almost a million coming from, uh, captured tax revenue and then about a four hundred sixty thousand in allocation of different re, of reserves. Uh, we did provide a COVID support, um, update regarding, uh, the, the program, what's going on and the amount of, uh, um, applicants at the time. And as well, we discussed budget considerations, uh, within there, including grant opportunities, marking pub, parking improvements, including off-street and reconfiguration, streetscape, social district, LED lighting and so on. And so that is my report for Tifa.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, uh, finally, the, uh, Eastside Community Network, Councilmember Hodges, you are our liaison to that, uh, uh, community organization. Do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor. And with that, I serve on the Mac Avenue Strategy Committee, uh, that group met this morning. Uh, as a reminder to those in attendance tonight, the group's intention is to coordinate efforts, uh, between the cities, county and other partners having jurisdiction along the Mac Avenue, uh, area on the east side. Highlights from today's meeting include, um, first, the Mac planning and zoning effort that's being led by the city of Girls' Point with McKenna and Associates moves to its next step, which is a public hearing set for Monday, May seventeenth, for those who would like to have input into that process. Uh, secondly, there was a desire expressed amongst committee members to coordinate the individual allocations of stimulus dollars that each community will be receiving, uh, and dedicating a portion of those to Mac Avenue so as to leverage those inputs. I did connect, um, our members of our administration with others, uh, that are serving on the Eastside Community Network to coordinate that further and have that discussion. Thirdly, there is an effort to clean up the corridor in tandem with the Motor City makeover on May twenty-second, and volunteers are being sought for that effort. Um, the Eastside Community Network will also be reopening its offices to in-person staff shortly, and they have multiple locations. Um, the Connor location is going to be reopened as the Stoudemire Wellness Hub. Um, and that's significant because it rightfully honors an important community leader, Marlo Stoudemire, whose life was tragically lost to COVID. So I think it's important to note that. Um, next, the Eastside Community Network is hosting its corporate meeting this Thursday morning. And our very own Planning Commission Chair, Malik Goodwin, will be one of the speakers at that time. And then a couple of just quick development updates. Um, I hope everybody already had dinner because they're going to make them hungry. Uh, but Burger Point will be opening soon near the Jets Pizza at University. And then perhaps most significantly, um, gotta take a deep breath on this one because this is really important to Girls' Point Parkers, the Aldi store at Alter and Mac. Um, it's closed temporarily for a major remodel. Excuse me, but it will come back in all its glory, especially the special aisle, uh, as well as the cheese section. And they're going to be adding an organic section and an expanded fresh produce area. And that'll open in about four weeks. Um, so because it is German-owned, I will end with a danke and a few. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Um, that is the last, uh, commission and committee report that I have noted. Did I miss one? Councilmember Flut?
Sustainability.
Oh, sustainability met. I am sorry.
Yeah. Sustainability met on, uh, April fourteenth. And, uh, we're continuing to work on a dedicated page on the city's website that will, um, educate and inform about, um, sustainability initiatives. We talked about different items that we could check off on the Michigan Green Communities Challenge. And, uh, we feel like with a, a list that, uh, the city manager of items that the city manager felt would be fairly easy for us to accomplish, we feel pretty confident we'll, we'll be able to get to bronze level certification. At the suggestion of Councilmember Rowan, instead of celebrating just Earth Day, we decided to make it a, a whole week running between Earth Day, which is April twenty-second, up until Arbor Day, which was April thirtieth. And so what we did, um, to commemorate that week was I utilized Councilmember McConnell's email list that she put together, um, for her sustain GPP initiative. And that way I was able to reach out to all of the businesses in the park. And I asked them to let me know what they were doing to promote green practices in the running of their businesses. And, um, I heard back from several places. There are a lot of, um, initiatives that I had no idea were going on, and some of our businesses had really made great strides. And so, um, almost every day from, from that April twenty-second to the thirtieth period, I was able to showcase a particular business in the park and talk about what sort of, um, steps they've been taking. So I, I thought that, um, we didn't get any response at first, and then people started responding and, um, it turned out really well. Uh, we're moving forward with, um, getting some recycling bins for the parks. Um, that's been budgeted for, uh, for the next fiscal year. Um, we talked about expanding, um, availability to bike racks, and that's something we're going to work on after the master plan is complete and we have a better picture of, um, biking in, in the city. We had planned for a presentation about pesticide usage in our parks, but that was put off to our next meeting. And, and then in our next meeting, we're also looking to, uh, talk about composting and a green procurement policy for the city. And that next meeting is scheduled for June sixteenth.
Okay, thank you. And I, I apologize for not having noted that you guys met. I think that closes our committee and commission reports. With that, we'll move on to the, uh, next agenda item, which is unfinished business. And, um, we have some big news to, uh, to share, which has been shared, but some big news to recognize, and that's that we will be having, uh, very soon, our new Public Safety Director, uh, take his, uh, position. And I'll ask, uh, the city manager to, uh, introduce, uh, Mr. Gerald.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Denner, uh, council and residents of Girls' Point Park. I'm very excited to introduce to you Mr. Brian Gerald, who will be our new Public Safety Director starting on May nineteenth. Um, you know, certainly, uh, without him though, I, I wanted to, uh, thank Lieutenant Bostock for his amazing work as interim Public Safety Director. He truly kept the department, uh, up to speed and, uh, snuff and, uh, you know, his, uh, his work can't, um, you know, go unfound. It was, uh, truly a pleasure to work with him and he'll be working hard with Mr. Gerald as part of this, uh, process and leading him along. And so, um, you know, this, this has started back in about February. We went through a process of getting about fourteen applications. Uh, then we had a third-party service of Emco who came in and, uh, uh, narrowed down our list to, um, uh, about, uh, four candidates. And then myself and a panel of two others, a city manager, police commissioner and a public safety director, um, you know, went with, uh, Mr. Brian Gerald. And so with that said, I would like to welcome Mr. Brian Gerald, the community. Uh, you're going to see him out and about all over the place. And, um, I'm, I'm very excited and I, I hope you will be as well. So, uh, without further ado, um, Mr. Brian Gerald, if you can join us by camera, um, and you could, uh, provide us an update.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, I gotta say, it's kind of difficult to follow a wooden tie, but I'm gonna try. Um, I'm grateful to city manager and, uh, the council and hopefully the support of the community for the opportunity to serve as your next Public Safety Director. I started my lifetime of service, uh, after I graduated from high school. And so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through and I'm gonna share some of my background with you. And, uh, hopefully at the end of this, you'll come away with a better understanding of who I am and how I intend to lead in, uh, Girls' Point Park. When I graduated from high school, I joined the United States Marine Corps and I served from seventy-eight to eighty-three. And I joined the Southfield Police Department in nineteen eighty-five. And over the next twenty-eight and a half years, I held just about every position available or supervised every position available in the police department. Started off in patrol like everybody, did about four years as a traffic officer, was an accident investigator. And then I did five years as a dare officer. And as a dare officer, I taught about four hundred students a year at five elementary schools. And that's probably where I, I really got my first, um, real understanding of, of the impact that law enforcement could make in community policing. Um, from there, I, I did that for about five years and then I was promoted to police specialist, which is basically an evidence technician. And so for the next couple of years, I processed crime scenes. Nineteen ninety-seven, I was promoted to sergeant and I was in charge of their crime prevention section. And then nineteen ninety-nine, I was promoted to lieutenant, where I, uh, actually I worked as a watch commander for about a year and a half, uh, where I was in charge of all road operations. I also worked for a year in patrol administration doing internal investigations and annual scheduling of personnel. And then I did about a year in staff services in charge of training, media relations and background investigations. Two thousand and three, I was promoted to deputy chief. And as a deputy chief, I had, uh, three years, I ran the entire patrol division and then for seven years I ran the investigations division. In two thousand and thirteen, I had the honor of being selected to be the chief of police for Prescott Valley, Arizona. It's a community of about fifty thousand population, uh, one of the fastest-growing communities in Arizona. And I had led a full-service department of about a hundred total employees, seventy-six of which were sworn police officers. Some of my more relevant training and education, I have a master's degree from the University of Oklahoma in leadership. I have a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University in criminal justice. I'm a graduate of the FBI National Academy, the Law Enforcement Executive Development Association's Command Institute, Northwestern University's Executive Management Program, Dale Carnegie's Leadership Training for Management, University of Louisville's Crime Prevention Institute. I attended the IACP, which is International Association Chiefs of Police Leadership Institute on Justice, Juvenile Justice Reform at Yale University. I attended a White House briefing on the Twenty-First Century Policing Initiative's final report in Washington DC. I participated in Fire Ops one oh one, which is, uh, put on by the Central Arizona Fire Medical Authority. And in addition, I have over five thousand hours, uh, of other in-service training conferences and seminars. I believe training should be ongoing and it should be relevant. And that's why all of this, that, one of the reasons I wanted to share all that with you is I believe that this training and education allows me to fulfill one of my greatest responsibilities, which is mentoring and developing my staff. And I know there's probably some concern over my lack of fire experience, so not only is this the education that I have, but I do plan on attending firefighter one and two courses to become familiar with that side of the, of the thing, of the house. So I've had some rather significant accomplishments throughout my career. Uh, I mentioned dare. But some of the things that I think are more relevant to issues in the park would be, um, we revised our entire recruiting and hiring practices in, in Prescott Valley. We can go into it in great detail, uh, later, but I can tell you that our, our efforts there resulted in a sixty-two percent increase in diversity within the department in just four years. We also, uh, created numerous outreach programs and all of them were designed to create, uh, or build trust between law enforcement- or build trust between law enforcement and the residents of the of the of the city. So some of those would be like Puente de la Comunidad, which stands for Bridge the Community. It was a, I worked in consultation with the Mexican consulate out of Phoenix and we developed this program directed to our Latino residents and it was designed again to just to build trust between the Latino residents and law enforcement. I hold numerous town halls and I plan on doing one here as soon as I get in and get a little bit acclimated, I want to hold a town hall. Because I think it's important for law enforcement to listen to the voices of the community. It's really easy for us to go into into neighborhoods and say, here's your problem and here's, here's what I'm going to do to fix it for you. When it may not be what they want at all. So I believe in town halls and I believe in being open to the public and approachable. And again, I will be doing one of those pretty soon. Another real successful program we did was Meaningful Contacts. Meaningful Contacts is where I asked officers to get out of their car and engage with people in non-enforcement type settings. Law enforcement, we tend to get a little bit jaded because most of the people we see are either suspects, criminals, witnesses or victims of crime. But I want our officers to know that and get to know other people in the community as members of that community. And it works in the reverse as well, so that the people in the residents in Prescott or in Gross Point Park know that our officers are also part of the community and they're not just out there doing enforcement type actions. We did a citizens' police academy. We did a youth police academy. I created a police advisory board. And I will be doing that again in in Gross Point Park. One of the things that we did was we put sporting equipment in all of the patrol cars. And then when officers were driving through neighborhoods and they'd come across kids, we encouraged them to get out and throw the ball around or play some frisbee or do whatever to just to interact with our youth in our community. We also, I was part of the successful resolution, although I don't know how successful wildland fires can be, but we worked to wildland fires as part of my cooperation and my relationships with the fire department or the fire. It's a regional fire. I don't know what you call it. It's a department, but it's a regional fire authority, I guess is what it is. And we worked on that on two different wildland fires. And so I can tell you that all of these efforts that we did and all this, the programs especially that we created resulted in Prescott Valley being named the safest city in northern Arizona and the 10th safest in the entire state for two years running. I would say that probably my greatest strength is the ability to create positive productive relationships with the community, that my staff and members of the police department, other agencies and the administration. And so in closing, I'll tell you that my philosophy in law enforcement mirrors that of the 21st Century Policing Initiative's final report. If you haven't ever got an opportunity to read it, I highly encourage it. I have 34 and a half years so far committed to serving others and I'm going to continue to do that in Gross Point Park. Gross Point Park is desirable to me for many reasons. It's a financially sound community. The level of engagements from its citizens I find to be extraordinary and very uplifting. It's a well-managed municipality, both from elected officials and appointed. And the public safety department has a really good reputation and that was important to me. Probably the most important thing to me, though, is that the tremendous community support that the law enforcement community there gets and that's very important. I'll be honest with you, I was very selective of where I wanted to go and the departments I wanted to work for. I've been back in Michigan now for two years. And this is, this is my first interview and my first appointment since being back and I couldn't be happier. I'm looking forward to working alongside Lieutenant Bostock and the other members of the police department or the public safety department as well as all of you. And so I again appreciate and I'm very grateful for this opportunity to continue doing something that I really love doing. And with that, I will take any questions that the council may have.
Okay, council, thanks very much for that introduction. I know we're all looking forward to meeting you personally and getting a chance, getting a chance to get to know you better when, when you get started, after you come back from vacation. I understand you're going to take a little break here coming up. So council, did you have any quick comments or questions for our soon to be director of public safety? Councilor Reed?
I want to say welcome. That was an impressive introduction. You gave us even more impressive than what city manager Seislin gave us to announce your hire and you gave us a lot to chew on there. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to meeting with you one on one and have a nice vacation and welcome to Gross Point Park.
Thank you.
I saw Mayor Pro Tim Robson's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to send a very warm welcome as well. Very impressive record, very impressive career. I noticed you had 22 community outreach programs in Prescott Valley and that's very impressive. I have been a great advocate of community outreach and I'm looking forward to working with you as is the council as well. Just real briefly, could you give me a thumbnail sketch of this police advisory board?
Yes, sir. So what we did was we had 22 members of the community that to represent all segments of the community. So we had a veteran on there. We had media, we had clergy, retirees. I'm trying to think, I mean, it just covered all aspects of the community, including a member of the local school body. So we had a high school, I think it was a high school senior. High school seniors aren't usually the best choice because they're going to be gone after a year. So I'd like to get them a little bit earlier in their, in their career at high school. But like it says in the 21st Century Policing Initiative, it's important that we listen to the voices of our youth and how they want to be policed. And so we had this member on the board. The whole idea of the advisory board was just another method of getting information and sharing information back and forth between law enforcement and then those different segments of the community. And it was really very successful and very popular, I might add. And I plan on starting one again in, in the park.
Thank you very much. And if it wouldn't be too difficult, if you could give me a copy of that 21st Century Police Initiative, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. He didn't toot his own horn, but Mayor Pro Tim Robson did have a long career in law enforcement. And it's, it's been great to have him on council and I know that he's looking forward to working with you. I saw another hand, Councilor McConnell.
Good evening. Again, welcome, Director. I wanted to, I posted a lengthy statement on Facebook at the time of your announcements. But giving you kudos for your track record and increasing diversity on community engagement and of course for creating those the safest city in northern, northern Arizona and then top 10, I think those are fantastic achievements. So kudos to you. I look forward to meeting you and working with you as well. I also wanted to again thank city manager Seislin for the process that was undertaken to find a director and for, you know, honoring my request to partner with Noble. As I understand, it was one of the most diverse pools of applicants that we've ever had in the park. And I think that's significant. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that as well. So welcome, Director, and thank you, city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Councilor Fluid's hand up.
Thanks. Again, I want to say welcome. I'm a little bit biased. I, I used to be with the FBI and one of the things that I did back in the last, in the previous century was to coordinate applicants for National Academy and for our LEEDs program. So I personally am delighted to know that you've already had that training. You've attended those academies, not only because it's difficult to be selected, it's quite prestigious just to be selected for those training programs and then I'm happy to know that that you are a graduate of those programs as well as all of the other impressive training programs that that you've also been a part of. You're correct, this community is, is very engaged. And I agree with you, I always support community engagement and public input. So I'm very glad to hear that and I'm really excited about all the programs that you've mentioned that have to do with community policing. I think that's, that's really important and I'm very glad to hear that you have all these, these ideas and all of these programs that you've already put in place in your, in your previous employment. So I look forward to meeting you and wanted to say welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Hodges?
You thought we were done, didn't you, Mayor Danner? But I can't resist, I can't resist the opportunity to warmly welcome Mr. Gerald to the force. You come at a really important time. And you have the honor of leading during that very important time. And it certainly strikes me that you're the kind of leader that would be inspired by an opportunity such as this to help push our community through some of its most pressing issues and taking our already exceptional police force and making it all the better as we navigate those. And my experience with the city of Southfield and working for its downtown development authority and its city manager showed me what a special community that is and how well it functions and how diverse it is. So you have had a great experience to bring you forward and I look forward to seeing how you deploy those same initiatives here to make us is outstanding, as I know we can be. And your success is our success. So I look forward to supporting you in any way I can and I'm glad you're ready for the challenge.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Rellin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to give a heartfelt thank you to interim chief Bostick for handling the transition and city manager Nick Seislin for an open process. I'm an education guy, so some of the things you mentioned, Mr. Gerald, are very impressive to me, continuous education. I think we all need continuous education to stay relevant. Diversity improvement, that's something that's very needed here in our town as it's come to, come to notice. The community trust building relationships initiatives that you've had, the public advisory board, the youth advisory board, I'd ask you to also include a school advisory board for our safety and to building those relationships with those kids is very important. I look forward to working with you, keeping and keeping our city as safe and happy as it has been for a long time. So welcome. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have to say that your credentials are very impressive and I feel that Gross Point Park is fortunate to, to have you joining, joining our leadership team. I have, I have a habit to call, we are a public safety department and you will be the director of public safety, but we have a habit of calling the guy in charge the chief. So, so chief, welcome aboard and welcome to Gross Point Park and I really look forward to working with you.
I look forward to working with all of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next, next topic. Which is really just winding up unfinished business. Council comment for unfinished businesses. As you know, we'll have council comment for new business as well, but is there council comment for unfinished business? Councilor Rellin?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question for city manager Seislin about the DDA committee report. Is this the proper time to ask that question?
Sure.
Okay, so Nick, you mentioned during the DDA meeting that the sewer and stormwater division plan that happened previously was messed up and we're going back to fix some sewers because they weren't, they weren't done properly in the previous project. I was wondering if you could say that same statement you said at DDA to us here?
I will do my best. I don't recall the exact word for word, so apologize for that, but what I did express to the DDA is, you know, the city engineers right now are using GIS and CAD to investigate all of our storm and our sewer within Gross Point Park. And so they're actually creating a map right now that's showing the entire city. And that as well as being worked on as part of our potential drinking water revolving fund loan project that I hope to bring before council and the public service commission, committee as part of that. And so we were looking through and something that brought, was brought to our attention by OHM advisors is that right in front of city hall, so this would be right in between Lake Point in Maryland, we had some old drawings from our former engineer, which was Stan Tech, their name was Ayers Lewis. And the drawings had shown that, these were the proposed engineer drawings, they had shown that it was separated. However, upon investigation by OHM advisors, it was not separated. Talking with Public Works and going back in history, I believe it's something that probably was a budget decision that was made. And so this is something that I thought and the engineers, that was very important to certainly, we want to dry our system as much as possible. That's something we're continuously doing with downspout disconnection and disconnecting any areas where it's going into a combined system over at our pump station. And so what I proposed to the DDA board for their consideration is that they would like to as a capital improvement project. But certainly I'm looking to see if we can get grant funds first, which will be much better to spend than our own dollars for that. And it was something that was discussed, a couple of members did express some concern and some others did say it could be an option. And so that was, that's about the best summary I could provide, so.
No, no, that's good. That's good. Did you mention that the water that was supposed to be going to the pump station at Patterson never made it over there? So it ended up getting diverted to the wrong area. My, my end game here is determining what was the cause of the flood in 2016, if that was a major incident. As you know, my house is out at the bottom of that from, from city hall down and if that water wasn't getting diverted properly, was this one of the major causes of the flood in 2016?
Yeah, I can, I can comment on that a little bit from a historical standpoint. So I was here in the community when we did the sewer separation. And the objective was to separate storm sewers from our combined sanitary system. Every place that was possible. I wasn't involved in municipal government at the time, but I was a resident and saw him tear up the middle of my street as many of you that were here did. What, what the, what the city manager identified was that, well, first of all, we, we knew after talking to people that were involved in the project, we knew that it was not going to, it wasn't 100% because of cost considerations on certain areas of directing storm flow. But it was as close as was feasible, given that we were retrofitting the community. However, and we continue to identify areas, we, and we have continued to identify areas where we can continue to dry the, dry the system out. So occasionally we have been able to find some private parking lots that, that whose catch basins needed to be diverted into the storm sewer and we've done that over the years. What the city manager pointed out was that this was in the original engineering drawings, but was never pursued for implementation. It's an incremental flow that we can divert into our storm system. There was, you can't say that any one thing caused the, caused the issues in 2016 other than five inches of rain in 11 hours, but but the, as we continue the process of trying to identify opportunities to dry out our system, this one came to light just recently in an engineering review. And it looks like it's a great opportunity to incrementally make progress in in continuing to divert all the stormwater that we can into our storm system versus our combined sanitary system.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I think at the residents' meeting, the, the staff that was there presenting to all the residents that were affected by that, we were told that that separation had already occurred. So they were, they were never told that there was possibilities or known issues, known separations that didn't get completed.
Yeah, I'm not sure that was known by anybody that was involved in that event in 2016, but could have been. Anyway, we're going to move forward and try and fix it, I guess is the point.
Yeah, I thought you just mentioned that it was known that we didn't do all of them, whereas they presented.
It was known, it was known that it wasn't feasible to catch, catch all of them, like there, there were a few parking lots that were identified later that were private parking lots and not part of the direct city system. The initial focus was on, on street catch basins, which are, which our city, city management controlled and to get that flow into our storm system rather than into our combined system. Once you get past the, the city-owned part of the system, which would be the street catch basins, then you're, then you're looking at individual by individual situations and trying to add them, whether it's, or, or get them out of the, out of the the combined flow, whether it's downspouts or a private parking lot or whatever. And so one by one, we've been trying to knock those off over the years.
That's, that's a great explanation. I appreciate that. So this situation is not a city-owned entity area then? Is that, that's what you're telling me?
At the time of the combination, at the time of the separation, it was, would have been a combination situation. There was still an old car dealer there and.
Okay, okay. I'll follow up with Nick and thanks for that explanation. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I saw Councilor Fluid?
Thanks. Okay, so now I'm confused because my understanding after the DDA presentation was that it was supposed to be separated at the time and perhaps the contractor had not done what they were supposed to do. Because then I reached out to the city manager and the city attorney and I said, should the city have to pay for this, even though it's been years and years ago, can we follow up with the contractor if this was something that was supposed to be done at the time? And they didn't complete the work that we asked them to do. So is that the case? That was my understanding. Or did we actually make a decision to leave it until later?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know the answer to that question.
My understanding is that this was probably due to a budget concern. Because the drawings did show that this area was to be separated, but upon investigation by OHM advisors, it was not.
So it's all kind of speculation at this point, why that happened and what does and what the decision process was to make it happen. But now that it's been identified, we have an opportunity to to change it.
Okay.
Councilmember McConnell.
I I'm I'm just glad to again hear the update about the application for the revolving loan fund. But I wanted to just, of course, reiterate that we did get some guidance today from the Michigan Municipal League, I think. College Councilmember Fluid also shared that information that did identify infrastructure, water sewer. So of course, I'd love that part of that 1.1 million federal funding to support that. It also did outline that. Dollars could support small businesses. So again, just echoing what we've said before. My hope is that those businesses that don't fall within the DDA and TIFA could also be considered whenever we get to that. And then lastly, there of course is. Additional conversation at Congress about a whole lot more money for infrastructure. So I hope that we also keep that in the back of our mind as another opportunity. To again, not have to spend the money across our taxpayers. So, thank you.
Okay, let's move on now to to new business. The first item of new business is our is our budget hearing. So we will formally open a a hearing on the proposed. 2021 2022 budget. And as part of that hearing, we will ask for public comment. Once we have heard public comment, you'll have you have before you a series of resolutions which. Allow us to adopt that budget and various parts of it that we are required to adopt. By statute at this time of year. Once we've gone through and we will do those resolution by resolution so that you understand and. And we'll get a we'll get a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution. We'll have discussion. And we will adopt each resolution as presented or as amended as it may come up during that discussion. So that's the intent. As we go forward, but we're going to start with with public comment. Related to the proposed budget. I'm going to turn that over to to city manager Seisland.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. So I have no written public comments, but I'll ask Leah Smith if we have any spoken public comments for the budget. Leah?
Mayor Danner, I have no public in the queue.
Okay, well, let's proceed then with the. With the approval of the of the budget. As I said, it's in a series of resolutions. The first resolution has to do with millage rates, which we are required to adopt every year. And in the case of the state of Michigan and as a municipality in the state of Michigan, we're we're bound by limitations. Under the Headley Proposition A structure. So. The. The millage rates that we're going to adopt here will are actually slightly lower than what they were this last year. And that is a result of the increased valuations of our of our real estate, the assessed values of our real estate. And so in order to compensate for that and to stay under the heavily caps, the millages have come down. So I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion to adopt. Resolution number one resolved that in accordance with PA 5 of 1982, requiring their governing body to establish the millage rate. Required to balance the 2021 22 fiscal year budget and in accordance with section 8.4 of the City of Gross Point Park Charter. Is hereby determined that the millage rate for general operating purposes for the fiscal year 2021 22 be 16.8822. Or 16.8822 per $1,000 of taxable value. 10.7074 general operating, 1.5851 rubbish disposal, 0.0744 communication fees. 0.9500 bond issue, 0.9676 roads and 2.5977 public safety. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, call the discussion. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland. Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Padgett.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes. Motion.
And Councilmember Rayland.
Thank you. Yes, my internet crashed.
Okay, okay.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Resolution number one passes. Resolution number two is the special assessment role. I'll read the the resolution, but just the thumbnail sketch. Any outstanding outstanding debt that an individual may have to the city. Which could be a water bill or or other things that have not been resolved. Can be moved then as a to a lien against their against their property and build as part of the property tax. This is a routine thing that's done every year. From past experience, turns out that some residents actually plan their budgets depending on this this action. So. What you have before you is resolution number two, special assessment role. Whereas in accordance with section 20.12 of the City of Gross Point Park City Code whereby when any expense shall have been incurred by the city in respect to any single premise. And subsequently such expense remain unpaid. And whereas such premise premises have been advised that such unpaid bills will be placed as a lien against such property. Plus 15% service charge if not paid by a certain date. Be it resolved that a special assessment role for delinquent bills for water and miscellaneous items be placed upon the property described in the exhibits as presented. Copies of which are on file in the city clerk's office and are part of these minutes. And the respective amounts set forth opposite said properties and said exhibits, including a service charge of 15%. For placing the bills of the bills for water and miscellaneous items on the special assessment role. And that the special assessment shall be due and payable at the time 2021 C taxes are next due and payable with respect to such property. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Sir, support.
Support.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed. Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Padgett.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Yes, motion passes. Resolution number two is adopted. We'll now now move on to. Resolution number three. Resolution number three is actually the the guts of the operating budget for the city. It deals with. Projected revenue streams and appropriations for expenses across all funds of the city, the general fund being the. The general operations of the city and then a number of specialty funds. I'll go through each one and read them. Then I'll ask for a motion to approve. We'll get support and then we can have a discussion. And then presumably vote on it. So this is a this is a long one, so I'm going to take a drink of water first. Resolution number three, resolved that having published proper notice notices and held a public hearing for the budgets of the following funds for the fiscal year 2021 22. Such budgets are hereby adopted in the amount set forth and purpose intended, along with increases in related revenue sources. General funds, estimated revenue. Property property taxes. I think I'll jump right to the to the bottom. Property taxes, licenses, state shared revenue. Charges for services, fines and forfeits, interest and rents, other revenues which total total estimated revenues of $12,796,856. Appropriations include city council, judicial, city manager, public service, elections, financial administration, city clerk. Public safety, public works, tree maintenance, parks, recreation, fitness and activity center. Planning and beautification and then transfers to others other funds for a total appropriations of $12,796,438. Moving on to other funds, major street fund, total estimated revenues, $1,139,051. Total appropriations, $1,139,051. Local street, total estimated revenues, $923,683. Total appropriations, $923,675. Garbage and rubbish collection, total estimated revenues, $1,304,385. Total appropriations, $1,304,329. Building department, total estimated revenues, $304,363. Total appropriations, $282,670. Downtown Development Authority Fund, total estimated revenues, $139,060. Total appropriations, $139,000 even. Total increment, I'm sorry, tax increment financing fund, total estimated revenues, $1,443,318. Total appropriations, $1,440,670. Indigent Defense Fund, total estimated revenues, $34,000. Total appropriations, $34,000. Drug Law Enforcement Fund, total estimated revenues, $3,000. Total appropriations, $3,000. Block Grant Fund, total estimated revenues, $20,000. Total appropriations, $20,000. Road Fund, total estimated revenues, $649,919. Total appropriations transferred out, $649,919. Bond debt, total estimated revenues, $638,097. Total appropriations, $636,725. Capital Improvement Bonds Series 2019, total estimated revenues, $2,134,287. Total appropriations, $2,134,287. DPW Public Works TIFA, total estimated. Revenues, $3,948,897. Total estimated appropriations, $3,948,897. Capital Improvement Fund, total estimated revenues, $797,000. Total appropriations, $796,165. Water and Sewer Fund, total estimated revenues, $5,564,015. Total appropriations, $6,334,150. And then Marina Fund, total estimated revenues, $393,027. Total appropriations, $410,746. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number three? So moved. Support.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Discussion. We went, we spent considerable time, as council knows and the public know, on this on the detail behind all these numbers in our budget workshop last week. So. With that, Councilmember Fluid.
There was just one thing that I I thought we had all agreed on, which was on the DDA funds to pull that $14,000 that had been. Placed for relocation of the DPW. And so I just wanted to confirm that that cost was not going to come out of the DDA budget.
We what we would need to do, because this budget reflects exactly what was presented at the workshop, to accomplish that, council would have to. Amend the proposed budget. So there would have to be an amendment on the floor, seconded and voted as part of the voting process after we're done with identifying any other amendments.
Okay.
So right now it's in unless we, somebody puts a motion on the floor. I saw Councilmember McConnell's hand up, I think, next.
You did. Thank you, Mayor Danner. So I just wanted to, a couple of things, again, thank city manager Seisland. Our finance director and all the department heads who worked on the budget. You know, I'm supportive of the budget, but I did want to sort of reiterate and echo Councilmember Reed's request that we treat this as a live document. That we revisit more than once a year, particularly as it relates to the unknown impact that COVID-19 may have on our. Fitness and Activity Center, our property taxes and our priorities as a whole. And and then I just also wanted to mention or sort of reissue my call that if there's a way. Going forward to engage the public in that discussion or better engage the public, I'd love to see if we can figure out a way to do that. Again, that could be budget workshops within the community or, you know, special meetings with the community. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed.
I echo the comments. I think we mostly said that last week, thanking the administration for putting this together. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead, Mayor, and move that we. Move the $14,000 DPW relocation line item out of the DDA budget and back into the general fund.
And there's support. We have a amendment and support. Okay, well, I'll. I'll hold that amendment in case there are more and then as 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 is appropriate process. We'll vote on any and all amendments in the last one first. So so we have have that moved and supported. Any any discussion on that before? Well, let's move on and we'll come, we can go back and discuss it as part of a vote. Councilmember McConnell.
I apologize. I forgot one of my my second question. For the public, can someone speak to in the Water and Sewer Fund and the Marina Fund? The the fact that the revenues and the appropriations are are not syncing up as closely as some of the others. Thanks.
I can answer that. In the Water and Sewer Fund, you have a non-cash depreciation of like $750,000. And I'm sorry, $575,000. And then there's quite a few expenditures, the Mack truck, water meters that totaled almost $250,000, the Mack truck with 159. They're booked as expenditures right now and they will be moved into an asset account. So it reduces the expenditures. So the depreciation is a non-cash expense. And then I wanted to point out, I just caught in the Marina Fund. The total estimated revenues and appropriations are an error. It says that's beginning and ending fund balance. So the total estimated revenues in Marina should be 307,293 and the expenditure should be 289,931. So if you look at your budget report under Marina, the numbers that were typed on the report are just the beginning and end fund balances in the Marina Fund on the very last page.
Okay, with that. With that information, I will put forth an amendment to amend the proposed budget in Marina Fund to. To have estimated revenues of $307,293 and total appropriations of $289,931 as the finance director just reported. Okay, that will be amendment two. Okay. I'm just making a note. Anybody else? We we worked this over pretty good last week and I have to tell you that I'm impressed by the amount of work that that the administration put in led by Finance Director Blayhut. Who also happens to be Clerk Blayhut. And it's it's an impressive piece of work, given the. Given the complexity of a budget like this. I also want to point out that what is not in this budget but will be addressed. By council in the future is the the dollars that are expected to come to to the city. Through from the federal government as part of the COVID relief program. We have an estimate of the number. We also just today got some guidance on it. That will come back with a proposed allocation of those dollars. Once the administration can process it. Which will happen probably early next fiscal year. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, this is just sort of a comment for the public, people who are paying attention under the the DPW Public Works TIFA. The estimated revenues includes our bond money. Uh, yeah, this is just sort of a comment for, um, the public, um, people who are paying attention under the, the DPW Public Works Tifa, the estimated revenues includes our bond money for the DPW project, that's, uh, significantly more revenues for the tip of them we would have in a typical year, if anyone's wondering why that, uh, amounts to so much more.
Okay, good point, thank you. Okay, uh, anything else before we move on? Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Um, just in my role as Councilmember for Finance, I just, I did have the opportunity to work closely with the administration, and it's quite clear we're in good hands, and I think that's important to note. And the proof point is that we've been at twenty-eight percent fund balance hitherto, and even in a deficit year, we're still in a very respectable range, um, which is important as we're looking ahead and dealing with underfunded liabilities and that need to prudently manage our resources as a result of that can't be overemphasized because it will be the difference between communities that languish and communities that thrive. So, um, on that note, and wanting to make sure we are as prudent as possible, um, I would point everybody to page three, the General Operating Fund under Public Safety Appropriations, um, there's a line item related to intermunicipal radio. Um, and my research shows me, uh, my conversations with the administration that there is the potential for a better way to remedy this, um, situation, and wanting to be in partnership with our city manager and, uh, wanting to give him a tool, uh, when negotiating, um, this matter going forward, I would recommend that we pull that item from the agenda, or excuse me, from the budget, which totals eighty thousand dollars, um, short of anything that we might be legally obligated to at this point. Um, I think that that would give him a strong negotiating ta, uh, tool when going back to the table, um, uh, and requiring him to bring this back to us for consideration when it's been, um, resolved and is in a more final form.
So is that, are you putting a motion on the floor to that effect?
We, uh, yes, I would like to do that. However, before formalizing that, would just like some input from the city manager, if there's a portion of that, that we're already legally obligated to, my goal is to get to the piece of it, um, that is not obligated at the moment, and pull that out.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Hot, oh.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Uh, so thank you, Councilmember Hodges. Uh, certainly, I think, uh, due to the average amount of our bills, um, prior to this twelve thousand, I would, uh, recommend a, um, requested budget, um, and, and give a little bit of, of room for maybe about, um, fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
That'd be my recommendation.
Then I would, um, move that we reduce that line item by thirty thousand dollars for a total appropriation of fifty thousand dollars. In the intermunicipal radio line item, uh, eight-five-two, under Public Safety Appropriations, Department Three Hundred.
Sir's port, or? Okay, we have three amendments on the floor, anybody else? Okay, let's, uh, let's take some votes here. Um, possibly some additional discussion. We'll start with the last one, first, Amendment Number Three. Uh, Amendment Number Three. I'm sorry, did some?
Can we ask questions on this one?
Oh, we, yeah, we will, what, what we'll do is we'll, uh, we'll, we'll start with, we'll have discussion, ask questions, and then we'll do the vote. So Amendment Number Three, which is to, uh, reduce the, uh, the eighty thousand dollar line item related to the radio charges to fifty thousand dollars. Um, that's been, uh, moved and supported, um, and further, uh, discussion, uh, before the vote. Councilmember Reed.
Just really a question for the city manager, maybe you just answered it, is that going to be enough for you when you're, um, at the table on, uh, negotiating those agreements? Because there's often a lag of, a month, um, before something can come to council. So is that going to be enough for you?
I do believe it will not be enough for me, Councilmember Reed, at least to get what we're required to pay under the intermunicipal radio, um, you know, that we've had in the past. How, I did discuss, um, and brought it for your concern, and, um, uh, Councilmember Rayland pointed out as well, that in the past two years, Grosse Pointe Farms has, um, uh, back billed actually, uh, some prior bills that all the communities were negotiating, if, could we find some other ways, whether we contract out how the radios are worked, or, um, the employees that are working there. And so we've had some, uh, uh, several good disagreements and discussions, and that's what we're going through right now in a civil manner, working with all the city managers and the public safety directors. Um, I do agree that this is helpful. Um, if I have the support of city council in regards to, um, you know, the UR concerned as the body, that, you know, the rates are getting quite high. Uh, we have discussed too, among the gross points, that there's an opportunity to potentially partner and work with the state of Michigan, who has radio towers that can service our patrol cars and talk radio. Um, so I, I feel very comfortable that the fifty thousand would be able to provide us at least what we're usually, you know, required to. I hope that helps.
Yeah, it does. And if, if that's, if you're agreeable to that, then I think we found the, the hole to plug for the DPW moving expenses.
I think, may have. Uh, any other discussion on this amendment? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, Amendment Three passes. Uh, that, that line item will be adjusted. Uh, Amendment Number Two is to correct the, uh, clerical error that, in the, uh, in the typed version of this resolution as it relates to the Marina Fund, to change the es, total estimated revenues and total appropriations, um, as reported by the Finance Director, to three hundred and seven thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars for revenues and two hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars for appropriations. Is there, uh, further discussion on that amendment? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, Amendment Two passes. Um, Amendment Number One, uh, which is to, um, move a fourteen thousand dollar charge related to DPW moving expenses from the DDA fund, fund budget to the, uh, general fund budget. Um, is there, that is in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars, is there further discussion on that? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, Amendment Number One passes. Um, now we go back to the original, uh, motion, which is to adopt Resolution Number Three, as now amended. Uh, any further discussion on Resolution Number Three? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes, we now have an operating budget for our city. Uh, thank you very much. Um, uh, let's see, Finance Director Blayhut, I, I have one additional resolution, which is labeled Resolution Number Five. I do not have anything labeled Resolution Number Three. Can you clarify that that is correct?
Four.
I mean, four, I did not have one labeled four, is that correct?
Yes, because our water sewer resolution is always Resolution Number Four, and since we're not increasing water sewer rates, we eliminated that and went to Number Five for recycling rates.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Resolution Number Five, uh, whereas, that having published proper notices and held a public hearing for rubbish and recycle rates, now therefore be it resolved that the recycle rate of eight dollars and seventy-one cents be increased to nine dollars and ninety-five through the bi-monthly water bill. Um, is there a motion to adopt Resolution Five?
I'm moved.
Support?
Support.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes, Resolution Number Five is, uh, is adopted. Uh, council, we now have a, uh, have done our duty and adopted, uh, the necessary budget resolutions for the next fiscal year. Congratulations to all involved, it was a very productive process. Um, and, uh, once again, I want to thank everybody who worked on it, and I want to thank, uh, council's, uh, attention to the detail and, and sticking with it through the workshop and, uh, making sure that we have the best budget we came up with for our city. So thank you. All right, um, having said that, we have a couple of other things on the agenda, council, I will ask you at this point, it's, we've been at it for about two hours, you want a, uh, a very short recess, or do you want to forge on ahead? We're gonna, we're gonna forge on ahead, okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a letter opposing House Bill Four Seven Two Two. Um, and, uh, Councilmember Reed brought this to our attention, that, uh, this issue is back in committee. Um, I, last time was in two thousand nineteen, uh, where we went on record, uh, at least individually as opposing it. And, uh, I would ask Councilmember Reed to introduce this item to us.
Thank you, Mayor Denner, yes, the, um, the timing, uh, this time around is better for us. Um, House Bill Forty, Forty-Six in twenty nineteen was, um, pending in the State House and was, um, designed to preempt all local zoning ordinances as they related to short-term rentals. Um, we were not able to act as a council because the committee met before the council could act. So we, as individual council members, did weigh in, and, um, I know I submitted comments, I know former council member Dan Clark did, I'm, I know members of our planning commission, both current and past, did as well. Um, I'm sure, um, uh, Mayor Denner and, uh, Councilmember Robson, um, weighed in, and these were i- items that we discussed. So it would, that did not come out of, uh, council, out of committee at the time, and now pending before the, um, House Commerce and Tourism Committee is a similar bill. And, um, what, um, what this letter that I've drafted, it, uh, the intent is not to, um, to, uh, prevent or ban short-term rentals in Grosse Pointe Park, but to maintain local control of our zoning. Um, that's very important for us as a city. Um, so, um, I drafted the letter, I'm happy to read it. Um, I'd like to, um, uh, ask for a motion, and actually I did propose some motion language, and I didn't make it to the agenda. Um, but, um, if I can go ahead and make the motion, it's, I moved.
Yes, please.
Yeah, um, I moved, um, to approve, um, council's letter to the House Commerce and Tourism Committee, uh, in opposition to House Bill Forty-seven Twenty-Two.
I support.
Um, is there discussion? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Robson?
I support, obviously, Councilmember Reed on this. Uh, I don't know if we need an amendment or not, but I would be advisable to also, uh, see, see our, our own state representative and our own, uh, state senator.
Yeah, I did have that on the copy that I submitted to, um, to the administration, but it did, I didn't see it make, that it made it on, um, the draft that you have before you. But, um, once we, uh, assuming that we approve this and sign it, um, I, I do recommend that we include a copy to Representative Tate and Senator, um, Holier, and I also have been in communication with one of the legislative associates at the MML, of which we're a member, and, um, and she's somebody that I've been in contact with over the last couple of years on this particular item. I told her this was on her agenda, and that I would share that with her because the MML is also advocating on behalf of municipalities in opposition to this House bill as well. So.
Okay, good. I, I have a quick question, uh, of, uh, format. Um, since this is designed, we will adopt this by resolution, uh, approving this letter. Um, the format shows that each individual council member signs it, which could be logistically a challenge. I'm wondering if, if it would make any sense to try and modify it to indicate, uh, that it's adopted, that this has been, uh, communication's been approved by resolution at city council and signed it, uh, city council at Grosse Pointe Park, and then perhaps list the mayor and council members? Or would, or should, or would you would like, uh, individual signatures? Just a, it's an open question. I don't have a strong.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Um, I thought perhaps we could use DocuSign, but, I mean, I'm fine with, I, I like that it lists the council by name as well as we, the council. Um, but whatever logistically works for city administration, because I'd like to get this in the committee's hands.
Right.
As soon as possible, so.
Well, let's, let's just assume that the administration will work out a logistical approach that, uh, is satisfactory on, on that question, leave it the way it is for now.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good with that. Your foot?
I just want to thank, uh, Councilmember Reed for the work she did on this. Um, I'm really glad that she caught it. I think it is an important issue, and, um, it's an excellent letter. So, um, thank you for that.
I would concur. Okay, that said, I think there's a motion on the floor. Um, are we ready to, uh, vote? I think we are. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, thank you. Um, we will go on record, uh, as, uh, trying to retain our, our, uh, home rule control on this important issue to us. So I appreciate all your work, Councilmember Reed, in getting us to, uh, to that vote. Um, moving on, um, Councilmember McConnell requested that, uh, an item be placed on the agenda to explore available options regarding ethnic intimidation situations, possible ethnic intimidation ordinance. With that, I'll ask Councilmember McConnell to introduce it as it's, uh, it's a topic that she, uh, requested that we discuss.
Thank you, Mayor Denner, and then I thank you, City Manager Seisland, for putting this on the agenda at my request. Just gonna give some brief history here and then hopefully get to the next step. Uh, as you all know, on February fifteenth, a resident of the park tricked the window facing his neighbor's house with a Ku Klux Klan flag. This horrific and cowardly act continues to terrify his neighbor, Jedana Dingus, as well as her daughter. Our council, along with the city manager, issued a strong statement condemning the act, and our community came together to host a peace rally that was attended by the hundreds. Uh, we continue to wrap our arms around Ms. Dingus. In March, the Wayne County Prosecutor called the incident, despite, quote, "despicable, traumatizing, and completely unacceptable", end quote. But she did not file charges because she said that our current laws don't allow for that. It's also important to note that our city attorney, Jake Howlett, researched whether there were any options on the books that allowed for local action, and he drew the same conclusion. Uh, fast forward to April twentieth, and the same individual contacts the Public Safety Department to say that he's thinking about putting the Klan flag back up. Since the March decision by the Wayne County Prosecutor, I've done some preliminary research to see what can be developed for our city to create better accountability and penalties for those who seek to harass and intimidate residents in the park, because as we've all said, hate has no home here. I should mention that there are other states and cities that have measures on the books that we can mirror. I'm asking that this be referred to the Ordnance Review Committee for consideration and research by our city attorney. I fully recognize the importance of ensuring that we avoid any conflicts with the First Amendment, uh, and that whatever we look at can withstand legal challenges, and of course does not fly in the face of state law. My request formally is that we refer this both, to both Jake and the Ordnance Review Committee for further research. Thank you.
Okay, um, does anyone want to comment? Nobody wants to comment. Councilmember Flue wants to comment.
Um, I, I don't really have anything substantive to say, but in, uh, other than I, I support exploring this issue. I think, um, our city attorney and our ordinance review chair, um, w- will do a fantastic job of exploring what the city can do with this. But I think, um, it's an important issue. Our county prosecutor herself said that, uh, perhaps the laws needed to be changed, and if, um, the city can make a small step with what we can do with an ordinance here, I would certainly be in support of that.
Okay, I'll make a, uh, I'll make a comment. Um, I do have some concerns about pursuing this, and, uh, I'll, I'll voice what those are. It has really nothing to do with the objective. I support the. I do have some concerns about pursuing this, and I'll voice what those are. It has really nothing to do with the objective. I support the objective that has been placed here before us by Councilman McConnell. However, I do have some concerns. This would be in the state of Michigan, a new area of law. As as we now know, the state statute doesn't address it, and no other municipality in the state addresses it, large or small. Most of the examples that I'm aware of so far from other states at the municipal level, at the city level, are cities that are much larger and better resourced than than us at at eleven thousand five hundred residents in a pretty lean and very busy city administration. So I'm worried. I'm worried that I'm concerned not worries are not the right word, concerned that this is this will create a drain on our city resources and present the opportunity for us to continue to spend resources, city resources on it. Because new areas of law of law tend to get challenged in court, and it's expensive to litigate. So I've got a concern that a city like us is not well positioned to be first in on issues such as this, where we're creating precedent for new law in our state. So that's my primary concern. We have scarcity resources as it is. I know that we're we've called upon our city attorney in ordinance review to do many, many other things as well. And I'm concerned that from a competing for resources resources standpoint, this may not be the appropriate time for Rose Point Park to pursue this. I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we were if somebody out here ahead of us that we could then that we could then mirror in the state of Michigan, because this we are, as a city, a creature of the state. And if it's not under state statute, then another city, I would like to be the pioneer on this so that we can we can have a model in the state that's withstood any court challenge that may come up. So that that's my primary concern. It doesn't say we can't pursue it, but I would tend not to be in favor of pursuing it at this time for those reasons. So further discussion. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. I I'm happy to take up this discussion in ordinance review. The I did some preliminary research, but really didn't have time to tackle the issue. So I have to study it, what we can do, what what some of the model ordinances are out there. And I mean, the big thing for me is we don't do not want to pass an ordinance that will not withstand court scrutiny, but I'm happy to take this up in our committee and have those discussions. I mean, I love digging into this and you know, not wasting council's time. I I'd love to hear from our city attorney on this because the the memo that we have for tonight is just the very basic information to have the discussion with with no recommendation. Typically, from ordinance review, we take up these items and we have that discussion. And then we sort of bring that recommendation back to council with the advice of our city attorney. As the Chair of the Ordnance Review Committee, I'm happy to do that. Often, we've had, you know, certain ordinances take up, you know, more than one committee meeting. It's something let's leave this in committee for a while and chew on it and see what we can do. So, you know, I'm happy to do it that way. I don't know if that satisfies Councilmember McConnell, but that's the typical way of of passing new ordinances or passing on. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. And relevant here would be the city attorney's view. So I can ask Mr. Howlett to comment.
Yeah, and and we've done some preliminary looking. I've had some discussions with Councilmember McConnell on this. I know she's participated in some different meetings and forums and things like that to to gather some information. You know, it's a difficult situation from a legal standpoint because we are very constricted by the Constitution, by the Supreme Court. But with that said, I I would echo what Councilmember Reed said, which is, you know, we've done some preliminary discussion or investigation and research. I'm at the next ordinance review committee meeting, you know, I'll be in a good position, I think, to present some of that and some additional research. Like I said, more on a preliminary basis, so we can make, I think, at that point, a more informed decision. Is it really worth going forward? Or are we sort of running up against a situation where even at the local level, we won't really be able to have much on the books that would be any different than at the state level? Or really give us some kind of avenue that's not available to us now, especially in light of, you know, kind of the specific circumstances. So you know, like I said, we've done some work. I've had some discussions, some very productive discussions with Councilmember McConnell. She's provided me with some information. We've done a little bit of extra looking. And so I think when we come around to the next ordinance committee meeting, my thought would be, you know, I can give a relatively short, I know I tend to be long winded, a relatively short presentation on sort of where that stands, and then we can sort of make an informed decision how to move forward on it.
Okay, with it with that said, the at least in the next couple of steps, the scarce resources that I was concerned about protecting are willing to to take this on. So at least for the next couple of steps, I think that it's it will be appropriate for the ordinance review committee and the city attorney to take those next steps that they that they outlined, and we'll see where where we end up. As I said, though, at least for the first couple of steps, those are the resources I was most concerned about. And I know that they'll make informed recommendations to us so as not to put us in legal jeopardy down the road, which could be a more significant problem for for the city. So with with that, I'm comfortable with the with the suggestion that it be referred to ordinance review. Any other comment? Mayor Pro Tim Robson.
Mayor, I am a member of the Ordnance Review Committee, and I would be in favor of this being studied by that committee. You bring up some great points, Councilmember McConnell does as well. I really want to delve into this. I was under the assumption that there might be already legislation with our slate state legislature, or even with Wayne County. Maybe there is, maybe there is, I don't know, but some we should discuss.
Okay. Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember McConnell. This is a very important step. And with the diligence that Councilmember Reed shows with all her decisions, I have truthful faith and with Councilmember Robson a part of that committee as well, and city attorney Howlett jumping in to make sure. I think it's a valid journey that we should take on, maybe trailblazing on something that needs to be taken care of, not just locally, but not just statewide, but nationally. It's a very relevant topic, and if I can help in any way, please let me know. I'll I'll throw in some hours on this as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think with that, though, the way to close this out would be to to thank Councilwoman McConnell for bringing it forward. And in spite of my concerns, everybody that's going to have to work on this wants to work on it, which is good. So that means that the resources that we're going to devote are going to be volunteers, not conscripted conscripted into into doing the work. So I think we'll look forward to hearing a report back from ordinance review. Is that acceptable to you, Councilman McConnell?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. Very good. Good discussion. I think that closes out the ethnic intimidation ordinance discussion. We have a direction set. We now move on to council comment, new business. Council, do you have any additional comments? I have one, so I'll I'll lead off this time. The there's been some confusion in the community that has gotten back to me about the city's role at this point in time on the future of the Trombley School property. And I wanted to make it clear to everybody that the city does not have a direct role on that. There's been a there's there's been a rumor that we're we're involved in brokering some sort of a deal between a nonprofit organization and the school district. That's that turns out not to be accurate. Trombley is a school building that's owned by the Rose Point Public School System. It is to remind everybody on on property that is to be used for school purposes, or if not, the underlying zoning is for single family residential. But no plans are in place to do anything with Trombley School, nor have they been proposed by the school district to, as the owners of the building, to the city to to do anything different with that. So I wanted to let you know that there are no current plans that I'm aware of, no active discussions that I'm aware of, and certainly none that the city is currently aware of. Because in fact, the Trombley is still activated as an early childhood program center. And I believe there's commitment to do so again in the next school year. So that's where we stand right now, and we're going to continue to stay close to that. We do have some people that are looking at that carefully on council as well as others in the community. It's obviously critical to to our city in the future, but I just wanted to comment on that. Anybody else? City manager, you seem to want to comment some perhaps on something that's related to what I just said.
Yes, you you beat me to it. One thing I did share communication with Superintendent Bee House. He did provide me some further clarification as well. And some of that, the Trombley E C C will have four classrooms for the twenty one twenty two school year. The Board of Education extended the E C C program for one more school year. And the future of the early childhood education program will be determined with a plan of action coming by September one, twenty twenty one. So just wanted to fill that in as well.
Okay, thank you. Other council comment, Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor Denner, wearing my council member for finance hat once again, and wanting to continue a thread of discussion that Member Reed initiated at our budget workshop regarding a reserve policy. And in light of the pending underfunded liabilities that we have awaiting, I would suggest that perhaps wearing that hat, that I begin looking into a reserve policy in tandem with the administration to bring back to this group for later consideration so that we are operating in a fiscally responsible way and preparing ourselves for those liabilities that are coming down the pike. So that would be my suggestion that we be enabled to do such a thing and bring that back for consideration.
Okay, I certainly have no objection. I think that was raised that we've never had a formal policy in this area, and perhaps it would be useful for future councils to have a formal policy. The only thing that we've had in the past, we discussed this at the budget workshop, is the advice of the state and the advice of our auditors, and currently, the the state's advice is that we have at least a twelve percent reserve in our fund balance. As pointed out, at the present time, we have twenty eight percent. This budget will cut into that, but will still be well over twenty percent with the implementation of the budget that we adopted today. So this is a good time to consider our policy going forward. So I would I'd appreciate it if you do work on that to be bring it back to us. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, just on that note, you know, I think a fund policy is an ever evolving issue. It's not we said it and it's set in stone because economics will dictate what our fund policy should be, and that's going to change. You know, maybe not every year, but probably every two, at least we would want to re review that. And then, I guess, bringing up some of the just items I raised from the that from our budget workshop is that we also, and I think I did see the city manager take some notes on that, that we also have a budget execution and monitoring. Not so much a policy, but that council, it it's not intended to be an agenda item, but that, you know, like it at my firm, I get monthly reports on everything. I mean, the reports are, you know, this thick and that we at least know on a regular basis, whether it's monthly or the very minimum quarterly. How are we doing on our budget? Do we have any unexpected items? So then this process becomes much easier because we're all sort of in tune with it as we go through each fiscal year.
Good. I I think that the city manager doesn't tend to put a process like that in place of periodic reporting back on what's going on with the budget. You can confirm that.
Yeah, Finance Director Blake Hutt and I have discussed that immediately after our meeting. That's something we definitely can do on a quarterly basis to provide for our city council. So not a problem at all.
Sounds good. Any other council comment? Councilmember McConnell.
Well, I think I've been inspired by you to dispel some a couple myths tonight, Mayor Dinner. So there's no plan by me or any of my colleagues to open up the parks, nor is there a plan by me or any of my colleagues to displace the arts center with so called affordable housing. So I just wanted to get that on the record. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Robson, you had your hand up.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I just want to remind everybody this week is National Police Week. And I like to express my appreciation to police officers everywhere. And in particular, to the men and women of the Rose Point Park Public Safety Department. Please know that your service is greatly appreciated by our community. Thank you for keeping the park one of the safest communities in Michigan. So ladies and gentlemen of our Public Safety Department, stand tall, stand proud, and stay safe. And then following that up, I do want to also give a shout out to Lieutenant Bostick for his outstanding job as interim director. And we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're here. I'll echo Mayor Pro Tim's comments. Anybody else before we move to adjourn? Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to say thank you to our Public Safety Department. Again, we are one of the safest communities that that we can be in. And being around town, we see a lot of police officers and public safety officers, and it's it's fantastic to to look them in the eye as they drive by and wave and nod and and get that that nod back and a smile and that community building relationships is happening. So so I really appreciate that. I want to bring up the repeated issues around our schools with drop off and pickup. My wife and I led a bike to school initiative for Safe Rounds last week. And on Thursday, we had fifty kids with us driving from Trombley all the way to Pearson to for we had a visit from the Trombley Principal, Mr. Fitz, Walter Fitzgibbons, which was fantastic. But um, we've had a lot of emails to City Council recently. Just in the last seven days, I've had ten discussions with different residents about what they've seen and what they've encountered during drop off and pickup, and it's quite concerning. It's something that I keep bringing up with Nick and public safety. I'm wondering what our next step is. I know we we just as today, I spoke to two residents who stated that there's people parking illegally near stop signs. Public safety would go by their U-turn, and I'm not calling anybody out. I I hope we can arm our public safety to give more tickets out to these people that are parking near stop signs and illegally parking past past or near corners, which makes it a lot a lot more dangerous to cross. I'm wondering what our next steps are. Do we need to have a community forum, a public safety committee meeting? We we keep pushing ideas around, but these issues keep happening. So I'm I'm looking to administration and public safety to to help us figure out how to make it as safe as possible. I don't think we're there yet. I think there's a lot of things we can do. The Smart Cone initiative hasn't worked. St. Paul and Somerset, I've not seen that that work once. Nick, I know I emailed you asking if we could get a yield to pedestrian sign in the middle of Somerset and St. Paul there. I think that would help out a lot. One, it would make people slow down a little as they get to the intersection. But it would actually state the law is if there's someone waiting to cross, you have to stop for them. It's something we're not used to here. I know a lot of cities have, if someone's waiting to cross, they have lit lit crosswalks that start blinking, let people know. But I think we need to move past that smart cone and get to something a little more substantial. When you pull out of Pierce, coming from the backyard, if you're on a bike, that intersection hits you in five feet. So coming out of bikes, I don't know if we need to design a bump out, which is a carve out kind of similar to what we did for the buses on Jefferson. We have something like that just to improve a little bit of safety. I think it's time for a change. So I'm looking to you, Mr. Sizlin, City Manager, to to help me guide us through this next this next phase. So I look forward to working with you on that and hearing what you have to say.
Yeah, so to that, yeah, you and I have certainly discussed this. Two things I can mention off the top of my head. I'm going to reach out to Rebecca Fannin, who's with the Rose Point Public School System. We did apply for that Safe Rounds to Schools grant. We should be hearing about their funding status really soon. And a couple of things you mentioned, especially the bump outs. I know they were looking at Nottingham and Kirchville in that area. We were also looking at that crosswalk in between Belfour and Nottingham, seeing if we can make some improvements there. I do know that Lieutenant Bostock has certainly had the officers over looking at Belfour, and we've advised to, and I would advise now to residents, if you see any concerns to call the non emergency hotline of the Public Safety, which is eight two two seventy four hundred. If you're seeing any illegally parked cars in areas. The other part that I think, you know, Councilmember Rayland and I discussed is that, yeah, certainly there's some improvements we can make over at Somerset and St. Paul. And we do have a service that we have on a retainer basis called T I A, which is Traffic Information Association. And so that's something that I want to immediately I talked with Lieutenant Bostock about engaging them to see, you know, with their best practice, what would they recommend for that area? Because Councilmember Member Rayland is right, we have had some issues over at the Smart Cone that is in that area. It's it just has not worked on on regards to actually blinking and working. We've been working with the developer on that. And so those are probably my immediate steps right now that I'll take and work out. And that's something you and I would be happy to discuss further. And I know the new chief, it's something school safety is very important to him. And something bringing in a new mind into the discussion, he might have something we should. And something bringing in a new mind into the discussion, he might have something we should consider.
Thank you, thank you, our city manager Seisland. We have about a month left to school. So I'm not sure if we can get maybe just that, that sign in the middle of Somerset and St. Paul, saying yield to pedestrians for now, and then we can work on something over the summer. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, good, thanks. Councilmember Flut?
Is, is that something that, because I see a lot of complaints about traffic around the schools as well, and you know, there are a lot of stories about kids almost being hit. People complaining about people, you know, leaving their cars in places where they're not supposed to. Are we at a point where. We would benefit from putting together a, a group formed of, you know, one member of the Public Safety Committee, Rebecca Fannin, or someone representing the school board? Have we talked about doing something like that, getting three or four people together and forming a task force? There are a lot of different options there, you know, from, you know, lowering the speed limits to just. Writing more tickets and kind of putting the fear of God into people, which I think might help, actually. There are lots of different options there, coming from, again, you know, this input from the schools, input from public safety, input. From residents who live nearby, input from elementary school parents. Is that something maybe we should pursue a, a group of, you know, five or six people that can all work together?
I'm going to defer that to. People that have been working on this more closely. One of the things that I'd like to see initially. Is, are the steps that the city manager just outlined, which is getting some, some new expertise applied to it. You know, I think that a lot of what I'll call civilian concerned people are going to have opinions, even if they have a role in. In some organization like public safety or the school, school district, but that. Applying the expertise of a traffic engineer, working with, with, with public safety in the schools. That seems like it's, it might be the shortest way to bear fruit, and that. And then as Councilmember Rowland pointed out, we've got the summer to, we're going to end up with the summer before we do anything really substantive. And hopefully by, hopefully during that process, we'll also get the Safe Routes to School grant squared away, and we can get some professional focus on it that way. So I, I feel pretty comfortable with the steps we're taking, and then I, my fear is that, that putting together a group without. Some structure and context already, will just slow the whole process of short-term improvement down. I think it may be a component of the longer-term effort that Councilmember Rowland talked, talked about that's going to happen after. After school's out during the course of the summer to get this right for next fall. That's my immediate reaction anyhow. It's not, it's not a terrible idea, but I don't want to slow down what we might be able to do in the near, very near term.
No, I would think if you put a task force together, it would take all summer probably to, to arrive at some solutions. But it would be nice to get input from all the different people that see all the different aspects of the problem.
Yeah, I'd like to see somebody come, you know, I'd like to see perhaps the administration and working with Councilmember Rowland. Decide if there's a, come forth to, if there's a recommendation to do something like that. To our council meeting in June, which would be probably an appropriate time to kick something off going into the summer if we're going to do that.
I kind of agree with you, I may, that it, it, we do have input, we do have the need for input. I think we're getting that. A formal group may, may come out of this in the summer of someone from public safety, maybe the new, the new chief. But also the principals are involved. I've talked to them weekly about this. And then as we all see, we are, we're all getting the emails about the, the close calls and all that. So. That's my goal, is to make sure they're, they're just close calls. We don't get past that. If we can eliminate those, that would be really good. It's outliers here and there. There's some speeding. I, I won't choose the right word, speeding bad people that go through, go through the area and don't understand it, but. The presence was, has been up, but there's still a lot of people that are just parked there. And I think, I think we need to, to tell our officers to go ahead and start ticketing those people. Like Councilmember Flut said, that the ticketing will help out as well. And then if people see other people getting tickets for parking illegally, they're going to stop doing it as well. So. So there's multiple paths, and I'm glad we're all supportive of this. Thank you.
I agree, I agree. Mayor Pro Tim Robson?
There are multiple paths that we can pursue. I do rely on Lieutenant Bostock and our, our new director. Personally, only personally, I would not be opposed to some sort of zero tolerance policy by our Department of Public Safety. I know they have that down where my grandchildren are in Lake Wake, Texas, at their school. They have a zero tolerance policy, and you would be amazed how compliant bad drivers are all of a sudden. So there's different things we can do. I've also asked the next month's council meeting on the agenda. The placement, a discussion on the placement of four-way stops. Avondale and also St. Paul. So that will be a discussion next month as well.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we move to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. I did this last meeting too. I've somehow got, we, we had such a great discussion, I got distracted. I don't, I don't know, I must be. I must, I must be wanting to, to get down to whatever's going to happen the rest of the evening. Okay. Sorry, my apologies again. So I did this two meetings in a row. Let's move on to public comment. Turn it over to the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. So I do have no written public comments tonight, and then I'm going to turn over to Leah for spoken public comment. Leah?
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. I do have people in the queue, so I'm going to reshare the three-minute timer. And then the first person in the queue is Brian. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And then please go ahead and state your full name and city residency for the record.
Hi, can you hear?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Resident of Gross Point Park. Yes, wishful thinking, Mayor Danner.
I wouldn't put it that way, but go ahead.
I just want to make quick mention as we sign off on another budget containing tens of thousands of dollars in studies. That these studies come at a cost. The dollars spent on these studies are not available for tangible improvements to our community. We will certainly allocate funds to those items that our community needs. But one of the things that makes our community so special is that we don't simply attend to our needs. But provide many things that we both like and want. We have finite budgets. And our wants and desires, not needs, are the items that I'm concerned may not be provided for when the money is all spent. I'd just like to use as an example the Tifa Parking Study. I'm not picking on Tifa, just using it as a convenient example. Some weeks ago, the Tifa Board seemed overwhelmingly against budgeting for a fifteen thousand dollar parking study. Clearly, that mood has softened, and now there is twenty-five thousand dollars in the Tifa budget for a parking study. A parking study for the Tifa District, an area not that large and pretty well fully built out. Given the constraints of a rather small and built-out area, I find it hard to imagine that a twenty-five thousand dollar parking study. Will provide some sort of parking epiphany. It seems that a little common sense applied to thinking this problem through would provide similar results. I don't think I'm in the minority in stating that I can't recall the last time I read a study that provided some sort of surprising result. Studies typically confirm what we already know or strongly suspect. I feel we have sufficient intellect through our boards, city government employees, and elected officials to competently think these issues through. Twenty-five thousand dollars to be told what we could have fairly easily come up with on our own. And what's lost? Again, our community needs will be met. In this case, I'm sure some new parking meters, as Nick had mentioned, maybe a new lot, et cetera. But what about the cool extras that make the park the special place that it is? And this is what I fear will be lost as budget money is spent. Personally, I would love to see some EV charging stations be part of our parking upgrades. There aren't any in the area. Every major automaker is working to increase their EV offerings, so I don't even think you can call. EV charging stations forward-thinking at this point, but this is Gross Point, so we will consider it forward-thinking. There are even government subsidies available if they haven't been fully allocated. Timing is perfect. Again, I'm not suggesting that the charging stations would make the cut either way, but with twenty-five grand spent on a study, something tangible will be lost. Also that we can have a consultant tell us what we inherently know already. This is just one example of what we may be foregoing to fund studies of questionable value. It just seems there are more beneficial ways to invest our limited budget dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Cynthia. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city of residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Danner. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Cynthia Douglas. Gross Point Woods. I am the president of the Gross Point Harper Woods NAACP. First of all, I want to welcome Chief Gerald to the community. I'm excited to hear that you are considering the Community Advisory Board. As you know, Gross Point. Harper Woods NAACP has been conducting government leaders forums for the last ten months. Where the park chief, former chief Pelosi participated, and Lieutenant. Bostock has also participated. So I'm excited to hear about the Community Advisory Board. We have been pushing for those within the five Gross Points and Harper Woods, and so. I'm excited to talk to you about that and look forward to meeting you. On another note, I would like to thank Councilwoman McConnell for introducing the proposed resolution. Regarding the ordinance for ethnic intimidation. As you may or may not know, the Gross Point Harper Woods NAACP is working with state legislators to develop statewide. Ordinance, and you all bring some very good points about having something that will stand up in court. We are working on that, and we are looking forward to seeing what. Results you come up with, with your ordinance as well. So again, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. That is a very important aspect of what we're looking into. So I just wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman McConnell for bringing forth this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person in the queue is Brian. I'm going to ask you to please unmute yourself and state your full name and city of residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Brian Bosberg, resident of Gross Point Park, as well as a resident of the Tifa District. And I just wanted to thank the Tifa Board members as well as city council. For their commitment, and I should add the Planning Commission to that as well, for their commitment to doing professional studies. This is something that governments all across the country do. It is a best practice. It is a small price to pay to spend tens of thousands of dollars. For study before the city commits to spending hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars. To make decisions that in many cases are permanent and irreversible. So I thank you for that commitment and the discussions that I've had with council members who have expressed their desire to also. Continue to have professional studies. I look forward to that. These studies also. Allow the public to be included in these discussions. A lot of the requests for planning studies have come from members of the community who do not feel that their voice is being heard. So I thank you for the commitment to this, and I hope to, that we continue to have good public participation in the studies underway. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Danner and City Manager Seisland, I have no further public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. That closes a public comment. Again, I apologize for appearing to, to try to skip it. It was not my intention. But at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
What we got? Okay. We have a motion, we have support on favor signified by saying aye. Posed, non-motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel. Very productive meeting. And it's only nine forty-five. Got a lot done and covered a lot of really important stuff. Core business for the city with the, with the budget and new topics that I think are, are going to serve us all well. So thank you and have a good rest of your evening.